Greetings, everyone. Pleased to see you all on this August 18th board meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let's establish that we have a quorum beginning with a roll call vote. What's going the other way? Christopher.
Here.
Meredith.
Here.
John.
Here.
Corby.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Do you know how hard I had to think about that too? Juan Carlos. Thank you. I am here as well. We do have a quorum. We're just gonna be spicy on this day. Mix it up right from the start. Corby, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Wonderful. To help ensure that we're centering our boardwork around our shared values and serving our students, we begin each of our board meetings by reading our district's Equity Framework and the Ho-Chunk Land Acknowledgement, which can be found at the top of the agenda. Joe, would you be willing to read those for us this evening?
I'd be happy to. The VASD Educational Equity Framework reads, "In the Verona Area School District, our mission is that each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. To meet this mission, the Verona Area School District will ensure that every individual has access to the educational, social, and emotional support they need to feel valued and affirmed in their unique identities and experiences. We acknowledge that inequities and power dynamics exist in our system such that some individuals, on the basis of their identities, face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. In acknowledgement of such, the Verona Area School District is committed to disrupting these systems of inequity." And the Ho-Chunk Land Acknowledgement reads, "There are currently 12 tribal nations who call Wisconsin home, with the Ho-Chunk Nation being the primary group living around Madison. No matter where you are in the state, you are on the ancestral land of a tribal nation. As we begin our meeting, we honor the land upon which we stand."
Thanks, Joe. Board members calling your attention then to the rest of tonight's agenda. Any questions, amendments? If not, I would accept a motion to approve tonight's agenda as written.
Motion two.
Thank you, Christopher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think I heard that one, Carlos. Thank you. The agenda has been approved. So then, moving forward in the agenda, we're stepping right into the superintendent's report. It's like starting with some summer school updates.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to come before our staff and community on this beautiful August 18th, a little drizzle, some storm. But we'll make it through.
That great Brewers game earlier?
Brewers game earlier?
Mm-hmm. Uh-huh. Sorry, I know. I know there's probably Cubs fans among us, but we'll still elevate it.
Believe it or not, we are exactly one week away from welcoming our amazing staff back to the Verona Area School District for our convocation. So I continue to promote that day where we can come back in unity and preparation for what will be another down-to-school year. Well, we wanted to just do a check-in on some really outstanding work that happened this summer in growth and execution, but also the planning that went into a really solid summer school experience for our students and our staff that really brought it to life. So we have a team here to talk about the summer school experience. You'll hear explicitly some of the adjustments that were made, really as we continue to lean into literacy components. I'll continue to say this in forward community work. It's not because of Act 20, it's because literacy is the right thing to do in ensuring that all of our students are literate and knowing that's the only true way to have freedom in our society. So with that, we'll turn it over to our summer school representatives to get us going.
Good evening. So we're excited tonight to showcase our school for multiple reasons. Not only does it serve to support our students, to help provide enrichment and academic support for them throughout the summer, but it also serves as a leadership pipeline and an opportunity for our principal designees and aspiring leaders to have a space to lead and to learn. And so tonight, I'm excited to share with you all our summer leadership team. So myself is the central office partner. Marlene Cook, who is not here, served as our summer school coordinator. Our principal for summer school elementary was Lucy Simonson. Secondary was Samantha Wolf. And then they will introduce their summer school support team. But again, it serves as a way for us to support our students as well. And you will hear the amazing number of students that we supported the entire summer. But it really gives our aspiring leaders an opportunity to apply the things that they're learning through the principal designate program and then things that they're learning in their daily lives. So I'll turn it over to our summer school leaders, and they'll take it further.
All right. Good evening. I'm Lucy Simonson. I served as elementary summer school principal this year. Sam and I are just going to get us started by talking just a little bit about some of the behind-the-scenes planning that went into summer school this year as we made some specific shifts to our programming and some of the systems that we designed or to execute summer school in alignment with some of our VASD guidance documents. So really, that was what we wanted to do as we were thinking about shifts that we wanted to make to the overall design of summer school. We used our VASD guiding documents, such as the Equity Framework, as kind of a pressure test when we were thinking about what shifts we were making. Were they getting us closer to actualizing our Equity Framework? If they were, they were often ideas that we continued to move forward in terms of our planning. We also centered our disparate North Star around disciplinary literacy and collaboration, as well as our teaching and learning framework as we thought about the overall design of literacy and literacy component of summer school. So really wanting to make sure that we had that consistent and coherent experience from the regular school year into summer school so that we had that consistency for our students, our staff, and our kids.
We also ensured that all of the components of our design and implementation supported the strategic framework's five priority areas. And so we did make connections to all five priority areas, but we had a laser-like focus on community collaboration, inclusive teaching and learning, and value and belonging. And so that did look a little bit different at the K5 level as it did at the 6-8 level, with the exception of inclusive teaching and learning, like Dr. Clarity framed up. We really focused on literacy for all and grade-level standards for all being the driver of all of our teaching and learning systems and structures in summer school. And then for community collaboration, again, we really prioritize reducing barriers for student enrollment and communication. We'll speak more to that when we go into kind of talking about K5 versus 6-12. And then for value and belonging, we really prioritized structuring that morning meeting, K12 versus K5, because all of our students deserve time and prioritization in terms of being seen, being heard, being valued, and having that time to build that intentional community with their teachers and with their peers.
Hi, I'm Molly Laurie. I was student support at the elementary this summer. And I get to talk about how many amazing students we had at the elementary level. We had a big increase from last year. We had, in total, 63 more students than we had last year. You can kind of see our totals from both A and B. We had a larger of session A than we did for session B, but just a really great increase overall. Some of the top, I would say, session classes that people really liked was science, technology, and animals. You can see some of the pictures there and some of those smiling faces and interesting animals that they got to check out this summer.
So the other big success that happened during summer school for elementary was the introduction of literacy for all as a part of the school day. So students came in, they had a morning meeting and breakfast, and then they went into 40 minutes of literacy instruction. And it was Tier One, and then we also have an intervention, which we'll talk about in a second. We provided 760 minutes of literacy instruction tied to grade-level standards during summer school. The way that we decided how to build up that spoken sequence was by analyzing our status summative assessments for each grade level and identifying the three or four standards that our students could use for repeated practicing, and then giving them opportunities to practice the skills from the grade level they just completed to ensure that there was no regression and students had additional opportunities to be able to become proficient in those standards. And so we built out a spoken sequence. Teachers were provided with all the resources that they needed. And then we had students self-reflect daily on the learning targets and progress monitor their own goals towards those standards in summer school. And those went home weekly to parents as a way to have to a communication with families about what was happening during literacy. And so one of the things that was really exciting to hear students talk about was when we went to get some feedback from them during summer school was the specificity with which they could talk about their learning. We heard them say, like, there was a student who was talking about, like, I love this content of this particular reading that we were doing. I was so excited about it. And then also could say the exact reading skill that they were working on while they were reading the content that they were so interested in. And so to hear students be able to talk about those skills tied to those grade-level standards with that level of specificity was really exciting for me as a leader. And I know our teachers could see that excitement in them and that connection to those skills that they were learning. So then for our Tier Two, this was for our rising fourth-grade students who have personalized reading plans. 63 of those students attended summer school, and they received targeted intervention during that literacy block, those 40 minutes. That looked like a pilot of a new resource. Lexia Core 5 and Lexia English Language Development were the two resources that we used depending on students' needs. And that allowed for independent practice of student skills at exactly the skill level that they were at. And then it also provided teachers with resources to provide small group instruction, to be able to do small groups, working collaboratively on reading skills, kind of opposite of that independent practice. So it was really great because it allowed for that differentiation for student needs. And the feedback on those resources were really strong. We did a lot of, got a lot of feedback from most students and from educators and ultimately made a recommendation to some of our central office partners about using this resource during the regular school year.
So after kids had their literacy, we then did something new in elementary summer school, which we had a passing time. We went on the loudspeaker and said, "Everyone in the red pod, now move to your enrichment classes." And then everyone in the green pod moved to your enrichment classes. It actually went really well. The kids transitioned after the first couple days. They knew where they were going. We had 33 different enrichment classes. And every time we walked into a classroom, there was so much joy and so much excitement. Kids, as you can see, "Come over and see what we're doing. Can I tell you the story that I just learned? Can I show you the next chess move that I just learned?" So there was so much excitement every time we went into a classroom, and it was really fun just to see their excitement and their joy.
Yeah. And then just to the point of the large increase in the kindergarten year recital was really a result of our intentional outreach to our pre-K families to make them aware of the opportunity for this specific course that really prepared our incoming kindergarteners to be ready for the experience of kindergarten. Historically, they had only been able to take that course in a two-week session, and we offered them the opportunity to come for all four weeks to better prepare them for kindergarten this year and help them have a more successful start to their time in kindergarten.
So now shifting to secondary. Students in grades six through 12 all attend secondary summer school, harmoniously all together at the high school. And so they, most of our 6-8 students attend two-week sessions, and almost all of our high school-age students in grades nine through 12 attend four-week sessions, because most of those classes are credit-bearing classes, and they do need to attend all four weeks in order to be eligible for that K5 credit. We had a huge increase in our enrollment at the secondary level. So you can see, summer 2024, we had 785 students enroll. In summer 2025, we had 1,074 students enrolled, and so that's an increase of 289 students. You can see the breakdown by session. Again, session A and B are mostly our 6-8 students, and then session C is mostly our 9-12 students. And then we had over 80 staff members participate. We really intentionally tried to prioritize outreach, K12, but specifically at the high school level. I made sure that I partnered with Mr. Cox and the high school team to identify students who might be at risk for graduating within four years due to credit attainment. And we did some really intentional prioritized outreach to those students and their families just to bring awareness to the different credit opportunities and the different classes that were being offered this summer. And we encouraged them to apply based off of the student's current transcript. We also had an event at the Boys and Girls Club where we supported registration and also just really did, I used a lot of different technology in order to outreach as well. So it wasn't just email, it wasn't just phone calls. I also leveraged, Mr. Cox was gracious enough to add me to the high schools for my accounts. I was also sending out reminder messages, which also helped with translation and language barriers that existed. At the secondary level, we also prioritized systems because we have middle schools and high school all coming together, and each of those spaces during the school year have their own systems and structures and expectations. We wanted to make sure that we had some universal expectations in place to not only support students, but also staff, and just be clear and transparent around, here's how we're inviting you all and welcoming you all in to engage in the summer school experience. And so we called it Wildcat Summer School. So instead of middle school or high school, we were just Wildcat Summer School over here. And then we also prioritized, again, with that daily morning meeting. My student support person, Deanna, and myself created some staff resources because morning meeting is traditionally a K5 universal practice, but it's really good for all students. And so we built out some slide decks. You all have access to it through the link. We also created very clear universal expectations called the Wildcat Way, and it laid out, here are our teaching and learning expectations for staff, and then here's our universal PBIS systems and structures for student staff. And then we also made sure that that was communicated, those expectations were communicated out via the morning meeting structure and the morning meeting resources, so we can ensure that messaging got to every single student instead of, because we wanted them to make sure that they understood the expectations. We also really supported, connected with our student response team to ensure that we were calibrated in our understanding and our approach to universal expectations. Everyone who was on radio, we had a daily morning huddle just to debrief, is anything popping up? Is there any, like, are there any classroom spaces we may need to push into? And we also did some scenario work in order to make sure we were calibrated in our understanding. I also used Smore to send out family newsletters. They are LinkedIn. And we got over 2,000 views on each of those family newsletters that got sent out. This slide is LinkedIn, but this is just a screenshot from some of our staff feedback survey. And there was a really huge appreciation for just the clear, transparent, and student-centered universal expectations that were in place this summer. We also prioritized literacy at the secondary level. So our 6-8 students engaged with a program called Success Maker, which is the program we also use during that typical academic school year. It is aligned to grade-level standards, but it also has the ability to be differentiated and personalized based off of a student's independent functional reading level. So it was a way for us to meet all students, seeing where they were at, and also work towards our goal of grade-level proficiency for all students. Students also captured their data daily in the data, the goal-setting sheet, and they reported that out to staff, and then we also shared that with them. At the high school, we really leaned into disciplinary literacy in action by really leaning into those grade-level standards and the literacy of their discipline. We had a lot of course offerings. You can see there are a lot of new middle school classes offered this summer, some returning classes. And at the high school, we're really trying to lean into that predictable course offering list so that we can continue to lean into building out a model that supports all students to graduate within four years. So we really want to make sure that the courses we're offering are a response to student credit data and student credit needs. Students called out that they could feel that there was more structure this summer than in summers past, but they appreciated it. There was a student who was FaceTiming with his friends during lunch. Dr. Hopkins got in on the FaceTime, and he was sharing out. He was like, "They have rules, they have expectations, and you have to meet them." But it's good. And that student had a very successful summer school experience. They earned a B in their class. They waited on the last day of school to be able to tell me, "I earned a B in my class, I earned my credit." And they're like, "Can you email my grandma?" And so there were a lot of, there was a lot of positive staff and student response to the clear structures and systems that we had in place. Again, a lot of student voice and a lot of positivity. And just during snack break, students were constantly coming up to Deanna and myself, meaning, "This is what we're writing on in class. I'm coming back next summer." And so you could feel the joy and the happiness within secondary summer school. And then caregiver voice also supports most students. You can see the responses to the question, "My children had an overall positive summer school experience." We did not get as many student-parent, guardian, caregiver responses as we were hoping for, so we'll lean into that next year. But you can see, overall, families were feeling like their students had an overall positive experience this summer.
And just to close us all out, we had an opportunity for Dr. Clarity to come and do a visit to both elementary summer school and secondary and then had a chance to kind of debrief some of what he was able to see and some of the feedback that we got. And so he really uplifted the fact that students and staff feel it felt joyful in the spaces. And there is some really clear evidence of the universal practices that we had been working on, as well as a handful other things. That intentional opportunity for literacy and intervention was also uplifted. And the one thing that he left us with was really about how we're measuring our impact on student learning. And so one of the things that we're going to start to look at is we'll have our AIMS Web Call Screener that will be able to give us some data around our students' literacy progress. So some of those students who came to summer school participated in our intervention. We'll be looking specifically at their data to see what the impact of summer school was on their ability to demonstrate those grade-level standards come fall. And obviously, we'll be able to look at credit attainment and other things too as a way to measure our success, but we'll keep looking for additional ways as we think about planning for summer 2026.
What questions can you all have for us?
So I just want to say phenomenal job. We had two students, one in Tier One and one in Tier Two. And I did not fill out the survey I'm sent. They had a great time, both of them. I think just some anecdotes. My son was in the creative writing class in the beginning. Couple days he came home and was like, "I don't know what to write." It would be frustrating. And then the next day, we gave him ideas to talk through, and he was writing like crazy the entire remainder of that time. And the other class that he took was the angler education class. So now he's constantly fish that were this big. But now he's a competitive fisherman now. He went out several times after that class so he could show me where to fish and then teach me how to fish. So next week, we'll be done fishing again. So phenomenal job. I just want to share that really, it really impacted our house. The kids talked about it. And you always can tell when it's a good program when the kids come home and they're excited to tell you what's going on. So thank you. Great job.
And we'd love for the school work to come next year and to work in.
That was something we had talked about, actually, with just how we try to think of during the school year visits and with just the intentionality of how this is really kind of a pull-through of what's happening during the school year. I think that sounds like a great opportunity because that gives us more information when we have our discussions at the board table, but sometimes feel like they're a little bit in isolation of what's happening. We would appreciate so much. I would. I think we would appreciate that opportunity immensely.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, and huge, I mean, the numbers, and I will just hone in a bit on the staff numbers, the number of our staff that are committing to this work in the summer. I mean, that just speaks, that speaks volumes, I think, to the commitment our staff have to, yeah. The commitment and greatness of our staff. And I appreciate the connection to really getting students involved, but just huge gratitude to all of you and all of the teachers that put in hours and hours this summer to do this amazing work to really move the needle for students academically while giving them this joyful and exciting kind of overlay of experiences. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We look forward. We will start planning summer, planning summer, planning summer.
And if there is any interesting data that you come about, you know, if you channel that through leadership, you know, we get weekly emails from leadership when we don't have board meetings, please feel free to share, you know, celebrations, anything that you notice as you get some of that data to circle back. I know that'd be something I'd be curious to just see what you learn as the school year begins.
Particularly in light of cloud threats to federal funding as it pertains to summer programming. I would love to see the positive data that comes out of this.
We can to collect it.
Thank you. Thanks so much, team.
All right. Continuing the superintendent's report. We're excited to bring our representatives for our family and community engagement. And to highlight that, I don't know if you could ever talk, Ms. Tamara Stanley comes to the stage, but we have a student with us that I made that. That goes over everything. So we're really excited to hear about our family and community engagement and welcome guests.
Well, glad to be here. I will not take it many times speaking. I will turn immediately over to Ms. Stanley and our student representative, who, I'll let her tell her story.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Tamara Stanley, and I serve as the Family Staffing Community Engagement Liaison for the district. And I'm just excited to be here this evening. I think I know everyone. Just a new, a new earth face. But just glad to be here to share a little bit of the work that I have been doing in the past year. It's been a while since the last time I sat in this space to share with you, so I'm excited about that. Our purpose here tonight is to really, just to really celebrate how our department is intentionally working to build relationships and to remove barriers for our families and to, to work to strongly support our, the work that we do is tied to our district strategic framework, and it supports three of the five priority areas. That's our community collaboration. It also speaks to value of belonging and to student agency. So we're going to talk a little bit, I'll share a little bit about that this evening. So Empower Her. In one of our signature programs that we launched in 2022-23 school year, which we called Empower Her. This program was designed for middle school students and focused on supporting students who have historically been underrepresented. So through weekly sessions, we created a brave space for self-expression and personal growth. And our students also had an opportunity to be a part, to be a part of community service opportunities where we created greeting cards, holiday cards, and we did no-sew quilts to donate to the elderly. Students who participated in this program also had an opportunity to be a part of the VASD Empower Summit where we kind of focused on leadership. We talked about, we had a theme from The Butterfly called Flourish and Fly, and it was a powerful event that highlighted identity and leadership development for our students. Another one of our, our programs that we implemented this year is effectively called the Family Gathering. Family gathering is about creating a space where families in our community can come together, connect, and build relationships. It's an opportunity to share value, valuable information, resources, and support while enjoying a warm, welcoming, and vibrant. Our time together is centered around fostering a sense of belonging and collaboration among families, schools, and organizations within our communities. We like to think of it as We like to think of it more, more than just an event, but a celebration of partnership with our families as we support our children and their growth and success. So some of the topics that we, we averaged about forty to fifty families at each of those events. We covered topics such as Power School Access, tips for parent teacher conferences, access for our lunch fund portal, summer school registration, offered some mental health support. So we talked about school attendance and really push, push that with our families. We've been talking to families about being prepared for natural disasters, which all families could definitely benefit from. We partnered with, one of the organizations that we partnered with was the Pittsburgh Housing Initiative to help some of our families that were in need as well.
Can I ask where the in-person meetings were held with that size of a group? Where did you have your in-person?
So we moved, so we moved around. So we, our first meeting was held at Our Redeemer Church. We had a meeting at Savannah Oaks Middle School. We had a meeting at the Badger Prairie Needs Network. So we moved around so that our families could access our meetings, so that would not be a barrier for them. I'm so sorry. When I was speaking about Empower Her, one of our students from the Empower Her program, one of the sessions that we had, she wrote a poem to kind of express how she was feeling from the, our session, from our time together. And so her poem was published in the magazine, you won't judge. There's a picture of her. And so her name is Brenna Erickson. And I'm going to, if you just allow her to just to, to read her poem. It was super powerful for not only us to hear it, but for the other, other students to hear her words as well.
Hi, like you said, I'm Brenna Erickson. And the poem was called, There's This Girl. And remember the, remember the days when you couldn't stop singing, dancing and dancing and dressing up, laughing and grinning? Well, that was before they all mocked how you dressed, said you would never fit in with the rest. And so you stopped smiling and changed what you wore. The music plays and you don't dance anymore. In case you look silly, in case you look absurd, for fear it would dredge up those memories past. For fear that you'll, for feeling, for fear that you'll never. Wait, I don't know what that is. For fear that you'll feel like you used to back then, embarrassed and worthless again and again. But there's this girl watching. She's looking at you, trying to figure out what she should do. Should she stop singing and swallow her voice, pick out outfits to wear? That would not be her choice. Should she resist urges to get up and dance because singing that quietly no one will laugh? She won't understand all the power she holds to do as she chooses and not as she's told. So warm your voices and then strike up the band, pick out your clothes and get ready to dance. And smile as, and smile as you do so. Think of that girl. She's the trap, she's the one entrapped inside you. So do it for her, do it for your own child, do it for yourself. Thank you. Yeah. So when I was on this phone, I, I was really dealing with a lot of different things at the time, like with bullying and a lot more. And I was really scared to actually be myself because I'd been bullied out of being myself. And I think you're just working with everyone else. It would kind of like bring me a little bit of comfort because I knew if I looked like everyone else, I wouldn't like be like bullied anymore. So, and overall, when I did read this poem in front of all the girls in Ms. Stanley's program, it really did bring everyone together into a conversation and it really opened up like everybody because like a lot of people in the program could relate to the poem. So.
Can you tell them some of the things you learned in the program? Was it all of them?
Yes. I gained a lot of confidence from it because everybody was very inclusive. And overall, it was just a very good program in my opinion. Like some of my favorite parts was when they were all able to share. And because we all, we all had a lot of the same experiences in school and we were all kind of alike in some way or form. And it was just a very comforting space because you knew that like what was in that classroom, like, it was like you were a family almost and like you really kind of just clicked with everyone and it was just a really nice, beautiful experience. So, yeah. I really liked it and I think we should continue because it's a very good program.
Okay, thank you. These are just a few of our community partners. We partnered with a number of organizations. BSU Block Party is one of the organizations that we helped with giving supplies away and community resources. JP Hair Design sponsored, one of the sponsors for the back to school haircuts. We partnered with Alderman Dayhurst to give away free bikes and helmets to over eighty students. We have backpacks to give away from the 100 Black Men of Madison. And so just a number, United Way Toys for Tots. We were able to get gifts to over two hundred and eighty families. That starts counting all of the children that, that were in those families. But we were able to, to provide gifts for them. We have received eighteen hundred snack bags from United Way. So I saw pretzels for.
We have pretzels for things.
Yes. So, and then we have another program that's called the Weekend Food Program, which deals with food insecurities for a lot of our families. It's been kind of running under the radar because we want to protect our families, but also be, provide what they need when they need it. So we're continuing that for next year as well. Moving right along, accessibility, you asked about where we had the events. And so moving them to different spaces, one of the things that we make sure that we could provide transportation when needed. We understand that the time that we have, the events may be during time where their families are getting off of work and they're getting children together and trying to cook dinner. And so we provided childcare, we provided food and we provided translation services for our families that needed translation. Looking ahead, so as, as we are looking at the, our, our students, we have taken the name from Empower Her and we're changing it to Empower Us to kind of, to embrace the, our student body. And so we also will be launching a family welcome center here at the high school, which I'm excited about. And I won't give you too much detail on that. Then we'll wait for that to come down, look it down the line for our grand opening. So. And then we're continuing, one of the, our programs that we started last year was our VASD staff peer networking group. And so we're going to continue with that. It's a wonderful way to support our staff. There will be just a time to come together. We came together, broke bread together, had an opportunity to talk and then, then we danced. We learned the line dance. And so it was just, just laughter, you know? Laughter is like a medicine. And so we were able to, to come together and enjoy some time outside of the classroom, outside of work. So promoting cultural awareness, strengthening our families, those are things that we will continue to work on over the year to deepen our, deepen the engagement of our families, to build those relationships, making sure that we continue with equitable access and really supporting the whole child and the whole family. So thank you for, for your time. Any questions?
Just wanted to say thank you for being so vulnerable, cheering your, your amazing poem. And I can relate to your poem as well. It's a great, great poem. Great program.
Thank you.
I just find it highly amusing when you sit in that chair and thank us for being able to come here. I mean, Ms. Stanley, I cannot think of another person that just embodies this role. I am so grateful for the work that you do. This is so impactful. I mean, just so impactful. I can, there's been visions. I think there's been pieces for a long time and desire of this district to do right. And you sitting at the helm of this work is just beyond measure. So, thank you. And the impact, I mean, directly on students, directly to families. I'm so excited about the Welcome Center, so I guess I'll wait until you invite us to the grand opening. But just, I mean, so much gratitude. This is so lovely of you to take the time too to share what's, what the updates are because it's just so amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to reiterate everything Jen just said because it captures everything I'm feeling here. I love seeing everything that you're bringing to life and then to have this put to words by our own student here. And that was beautiful. There's a lot of old girls who actually feel that. So that poem really was fantastic. And Ms. Stanley, what you do is amazing. Thank you for giving space for this type of, of belonging and connection to be taking place among our students and our families and our staff.
I was going to reiterate all of that. Ms. Stanley, I deeply appreciate your work, obviously. Really appreciate the poems. I think everybody on this board will tell you that I absolutely love the idea of being yourself and being in control of what you do and not being told what to do, since I do that all the time. But, but I definitely can relate to being that kid that didn't want to do that because it might get made fun of. And now I embrace it, including the getting made fun of part.
So just wanted to make sure to go. Christmas Day, thank you so much for, not just for your presentation, but you're, you're one of the first people to just greet me with a smile when I walked into this district five years ago now. It's gone by so, so fast. And it was before I was, I think I was just trying to figure out where the main office was and figure out. Before I was even selected as superintendent, I was just learning the space. And I met you and like I got to figure out how to be here because there's some amazing people. So thank you for everything that you continue to bring. I think on our board, why you didn't do the whole surprise and we do have the surprise report with that, when they get to see the Welcome Center that's coming to life in that space and like I'm telling words that, then they'll, they'll see the fruition of everything that's, that's coming together. I also want to thank the, thank the team. Thank you so much for your poem. And I also want to just turn to my team and just remind us when, you know, summers and sometimes times get, get hard and we push each other very, very hard, team. And I really want you to listen to my voice right now. Whenever we feel like we're getting tired or we're, we're getting boxed around or someone, um, let's just say some political format decides that education is not the right channel. Remember what she just said, please. Hold it in your heart, hold it in your spirit. Lift yourselves up because we're doing the right work. And this is just a, this is the evidence of why we're doing the work every single day. So let these words resonate. Keep a copy of that poem in your, in your heart. But also remember the child behind it that continues to push up to do the right work every single day. So thank you for blessing us with that opportunity to learn from you. Thank you for, for greatness. Such a wonderful child and giving us the honor of being able to serve her every, every single day as well. So thank, thank you, thank you as well. Also, there's two amazing people behind the scenes that don't like attention, but I'm going to do it. Ms. Stephanie Sanchez, you haven't got to meet her yet, here at our, at our high school. I'm unconsciously for her. I think it's funny. I'm going to put her on TV on Friday morning. She'll be on Channel 3000 with, with Mr. Cox highlighting the back to school, the events everywhere. And it's, and it's live, so no pressure. And Ms. Eland, who we brought before you about a month ago, but continues to work behind the scenes in partnership with, with our team. So thank you both for your continued support and everything you do for our families. So. I'm going to close out, but just wanted to, you know, lose an opportunity like that to remember why we do the work. And just wanted to put that into our space.
I was just going to ask the same thing. Yeah. Yeah. And all the way through making sure that you feel like the things that you want out of programs like Empower Her can come to fruition, if that means you are talking to leadership, if leadership is talking to us. Like you're the voice to say, these are the things we want to keep seeing. So we want to be supportive of that as well. I think.
Yes, there, there's something I wanted to say to you that I wish was said to me when I was your age. As you continue to achieve greatness, because you're doing it right now, you're going to notice that you're different. And that's okay. Embrace that. Embrace that. Who wants to be the same as everybody else? So embrace it. That means you're just elevating. Continue with the climb. Continue with the climb.
It's like being a trendsetter.
Exactly.
Thank you all. Thank you. What a pivot this was. Yeah. And the rain. Yeah. And the rain here is falling.
I know. There's a shift of energy happening right now.
All right.
All right. Really appropriately, that's not. Our next topic is Act 95 and segue from things that are built organically through our organization to some of the things that are, things we have to react to from a legislative level. This is where we are in this space. And I'm being as completely clean today as I possibly can, Johnson. That's good. Thank you. I say all that, you know, that the, based off of like the board is the deciding, has deciding power on, on all things with Wisconsin Guarantee. Really the purposes for our presentation today is honestly, there's still some misconceptions on what Wisconsin Guarantee is and what is not. It often gets misconstrued with direct admit, which is not part of the Wisconsin Guarantee program. So we want to make sure we're understanding that. Secondly, the piece that we are really digging into is the tiebreaker component for students that have a 4.0 in their junior year. And based off this, off Act 95, there has to be a tiebreaker component because we cannot send all of our 4.0s to the University of Wisconsin Board for consideration based off the interpretation of our. So with that, I'll turn it over to our team. Thank you so, so much for being here today and sort of putting Ms. Eland.
Thank you, Dr. 30. And you see, there is a slight connection, right, between Act 95 and what we just heard about in terms of summer school and community engagement. Summer school certainly has credit entering opportunities that could factor into Act 95. And we know that there's certainly a community engagement component on that nearly as celebratory, but those are, are important components as we lean into this. So as Dr. 30 said, we know that this conversation is based on the basis of legislation that requires us to create a system that prioritizes certain measures over others to identify the top five and the top ten percent of a class. We also know that in the Burnery School District, we historically have not utilized these type of ranking systems, instead focusing on the students' personal goals and helping them thrive in a diverse global society. So knowing that, our approach to Act 95 and conversations with the board previously, it really leaned into trying to apply our values and our priorities to how we think about this legislation, most specifically thinking about how can we choose measures that are most accessible to all students? So how can we really lean into access in how we approach Act 95? And so now as we approach our third year, our third class of students that Act 95 will apply to, we have begun to reflect a bit on what have we learned from some of the tiebreaking criteria we've chosen and what has been the intentional or unintentional impact on access to students. And so that's kind of the conversation that we'll look forward to today. Excited to be joined by Mr. Cox, our VHS principal, of course, and Ms. Kelly O'Connell, who's become one of our counselors at the high school and our department chair. So I'm going to hand it over to Ms. O'Connell, who will take us through first kind of that differentiation about Act 95, direct admit. And then we'll get more specifically, what have we learned about the criteria that we have for Act 95? And what, what might we want to consider?
So direct admit in Wisconsin Guarantee, as Dr. Clarity said, often get confused because they both came out at the same time. One, we were kind of prepared for it and one was kind of out of the blue. And so I think it's sometimes hard to differentiate between the two. And they are very different as one is much easier to be a part of than the other because the other is just the top ten percent. So I'm going to spend some time just. So, I'm going to spend some time just clarifying the difference between them, what that means for our students and who gets to qualify for both of those. So, direct admit, any student in their senior year, well, junior year going into senior year can qualify. And in order to qualify for direct admit, they have to meet those minimum state requirements. So, four years of English, three years of science, three years of eligible math, three years of social studies, the 1.5 PE and health. And so, any student who's going to meet those requirements by the end of their senior year will qualify for direct admit. And then the UW system every year uses GPA to determine what tier are they and which schools are they offered admittance to. In July, students who qualify then get an email or a letter from the UW system saying, congratulations, you have the option to be admitted to any of XYZ universities and you don't even have to apply. All you have to do is fill out that you're interested and by the deadline of May 1st, submit that you are accepting your acceptance to which university. And so, all students who are eligible will get that in July. And they don't have to fill out an application, they literally just go on, create their account, say I'm interested, and then decide by the admittance date that they want to go. So, it takes a lot of barriers away and UW's hope is that it increases diversity and students wanting to come there. Because it's taking down the barriers of having to pay for applications, of having to go through that process that they've never done and if they're a first generation student. And so, UW created that system. There are three schools in the UW system that do not.
Just for language purposes, I think if you were saying UW, I think UW Madison, you're saying the UW system.
Yes.
So, it's not UW because UW Madison's not part of that.
Right, yeah. So, there are three UW schools that do not participate in direct admit. That would be UW Madison, UW O'Clare and UW La Crosse. So, those three have chosen not to participate. Students can still get into those universities, they just have to apply. And those dates, that's July between junior and senior year. And by May, ending their senior year is when they have to say, I'm for sure coming. Yes.
And it's also for some background information, excuse me, is there reasoning why those universities don't participate? Or what is it that you're aware of?
I think they, they are more competitive, is what they have told us, is that they feel like they're more competitive and have a lower acceptance rate and therefore want more say in whether they're admitting. Yes. So, that is how direct admit works. We do have the opportunity every year because as we know, students sometimes change their schedules. So, a student who maybe made a choice that kept them out of direct admit does have that opportunity to change it. And in September, we can send updates in to say the student now qualifies, so they can qualify. So, that is a great opportunity they have given us. At the same time, we have Wisconsin Guarantee come out through Act 95. And so, this is what requires us to say, here is our top 5% and here is our top 10% of students. And as you know, this last year, they qualified and said, you may not submit more than 5 or 10%. So, you must have tiebreakers in place if you need to break that. And so, this again is for juniors going into their senior year. So, we, in June, once their junior year has completed, all grades are final. That is when we go through, we look at our 4.0s, we determine how many students are in the class. And then we're able to break down how many would be the top five, how many would be the top 10. And then we use our tiebreakers to break what we need when there is that tie of GPA, which we did need to use all three tiebreakers this year. What this means is students still qualify in the top 5%, still need to apply to a university system school. So, we're still talking about four-year university system schools. But if they apply, they know they will be accepted. So, the university has to accept them. So, in the top 5%, that is all UW schools, including Madison, La Crosse and O'Clare. For top 10%, students again have to apply. The only school that does not guarantee admittance is UW Madison. But all other universities that are part of the UW system will guarantee admittance. So, again, students know, I applied, I don't have to wait for that acceptance letter, I know I'm going to be accepted. And so, that has opened up a little bit of a door for some students because that did shift UW Madison's requirements. They actually dropped their rural language requirement because they realized they had to accept students who maybe potentially didn't have that because they were in the top rankings. So, that has opened the door a little bit for those students. And so, again, that's in June, once grades are finalized that we do that.
So, those students are still required to fill out the application?
Yes.
And do all the rigmarole that they know they're going to be guaranteed admittance if they follow the tiers that you described for UW Madison or another university system school? Sorry. It helps me to reflect in that because these are so interwoven and complex.
Yes. And the university systems have, have said to us that is not impacting students who are applying that maybe aren't in the top 5 or 10%. They, as they've analyzed their data, are seeing they're still accepting 98% basically of the students they would have accepted without that. So, they're not saying that there's less of a chance to get in if you're not in the top 5 or 10%.
And maybe this clarifying question would be helpful later, but I'll surface it now, is in terms of like timeframe, if a student knows they're not going to submit an application to a 5 or 10% tiered option for themselves. You know, are there times when families have to make decisions, say, I'm not going to take advantage of the Wisconsin Guarantee? I think my question could go a lot longer, but I think I'll start with it there.
It will be the same as anything. So, they can apply to UW Madison, know they're accepted, they're not locked in. So, even if they're in the top 5% that does not lock them in, they can still have that acceptance. And if they really have their dream school that's in New York, they still have by that decision date in the spring that UW sets to make that decision.
Thank you. It doesn't open up a spot for another student.
Right, and right, yeah, okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
And so, to kind of compare, we've gone through two annual cycles of this. And I think it's important to voice into this space and for our public, a feeling that I think we all share around this table and all throughout our organization is that this act has caused us to sort and select students, which is something we're vehemently against. In saying that one student is superior or less than another. And so, I think that has been the big disconnect for a lot of us as we've had to navigate this waiver and at least tiebreaker system. So, in 2025, we did not have to use any type of tiebreaking system. Our top 5% all had the same GPA and the numbers worked out in the first round. This past year, as Ms. O'Connell stated, we did have to go through all three of the tiebreakers in terms of our 4.0s. And so, with this, there's a few factors that go into this. Just to remind our public, the three specific factors that the board noted on earlier in the year specifically looked at the total number of credits, along with the second criteria being number of AP classes taken. And the third criteria being a score on the ACT, specifically on the assessment given here at the high school during the spring. So, as we dig into this data a little bit more, you'll see that for our top 5%, I mean, it's only 23 students get in. And I will tell you that we have almost, I believe, 48 students, if I remember correctly, that had a 4.0 within our organization. And so, this becomes more and more challenging for schools that have high academic standards, high rigor, coupled with high support for students. And so, within this, you can see that the average for our top 5% for credits in that first high ranking category was 21.78. It's important to note that if a student takes a class every opportunity they have within the school day with us, they should amass 21 credits by this point. And so, you might be asking yourself, well, how, how is the average above 21? And this gets into a little bit of the nuances that we're trying to navigate through along with the board is that we have certain avenues or pathways that might create access issues for some of our scholars and give them more opportunities to gain more credits faster than others in our system. And so, we'll get into that a little bit more here shortly. Within the average of AP scores was a 4.2 on average among our top 5%. So, I definitely want to reiterate that no one is getting into the top 5% by taking, getting a 4.0 by taking all elective courses. Every single person that's in this group is taking highly rigorous coursework. And so, to dig into these a little bit more, when we look specifically at the total number of credits, we have a couple of opportunities within our system that can allow a student to amass more credit than just those 21. Specific ones, you heard from earlier tonight in terms of summer school. Summer school is an opportunity that if you are in luck of the draw and are able to take some other credits during that time period during your high school years, you'll amass more than 21 credits. Based on the way our criteria is set up right now, that gives more access and opportunity to students. Additionally, if you are in the apprenticeship, there's an opportunity there, maybe a little bit further opportunity or further to reach opportunity in summer school. You can amass more than 21 credits if you're involved in the apprenticeship. Additionally, other MATC partner programs such as our STEM Academy offer more opportunities. And so, that's a key thing as we look at what is the barriers to access and creating a fair opportunity for all. Within our AP credits specifically, it's interesting when you look across all the AP offerings, there's about 33 in total that we took AP tests on this past school year. And you'll see here on this next slide specifically where they break down into specific content areas. And again, certain content areas are, are more blessed with more AP courses in the sense of there's just more offered. And within those, if you have a student who's highly gifted in math, they have not as many opportunities as somebody who might be gifted in sciences or within the social sciences. Furthermore, when you look at music, maybe one of our most gifted musicians, ultimately, there's only one AP course in that matriculation of coursework. And so, again, as we try to navigate access and opportunity for our scholars, this is something that we have to take into account as well. As Ms. O'Connell dove in earlier and brought up the point that during our first year of this act, we had students with 3.7 GPAs still get accepted to the University of Wisconsin Madison. And so, I think that's another point that I've reiterated to families is that if we, you know, backtrack two years of time, everybody still had to apply, everybody still had to get in, there was a little bit of that waiting game. We're still in that boat now. And so, if people operate from that with the high rigorous coursework they've been doing here, they still stand a very, very high chance of getting in. And I think that's the message we need to, to share with families is that just because you weren't guaranteed something right out of the gates, doesn't mean it's not an opportunity. Doesn't mean that it's out there. My grandfather once told me that the things that are most cherished and most valuable are the things that you have to work a little bit for, right? So, just don't give up hope on that piece. Secondarily, with our direct admit program, we had 402 of our graduating seniors that met the mark to be involved with direct admit and into the UW system schools. And so, that's another key indicator as well, is that between these two programs, there's a lot of opportunity. But how we choose to set our tiebreaker criteria does have some impact. And so, turn that back over to Ms. Eland.
So, a few pieces here, just in, as we reflect on how the criteria have played out over the past two years. As Mr. Cox said, we didn't actually need tiebreaking criteria. Our first year, this past summer, we exhausted all three criteria for the top 5% and one criteria for the top 10. We do know we've been referring to 4.0 GPA multiple times tonight and thinking about those tiebreakers. Really, Act 95 requires us to rank by GPA, it wouldn't necessarily have to be all 4.0. If the top 23 or the top 5% of students went to a different GPA, we still would be looking at a tiebreaking criteria. So, in this example, if the top 10% were 48 students and numbers 47, 48, 49 all had a GPA of 3.92, we'd still be looking at tiebreaking criteria there as well. So, 4.0 factors in, certainly, but tiebreaking criteria might be needed regardless of what that GPA looks like. A few other pieces that we wanted to just set the stage for as we've thought through some of what these criteria can look like. We do know long before Act 95, we have had an academic excellence scholarship and we have admin roll 434 that has its own tiebreaking criteria that we've been using previously to award that very valuable scholarship for students. Those tiebreaking criteria are here, the first one after GPA is ACT score. So, highest composite ACT score is number one for the academic excellence scholarship. Number two then is total number of credits. This is after seven semesters because you don't have to decide until the middle of senior year, whereas Act 95 requires after six. And their third tiebreaker here was a chance drawing. So, just also naming that has been a bit of a question, you know, that Kelly and her team have gotten many times. Act 95, those tiebreakers are this, academic excellence is this, you could have students that are qualifying here and not qualifying there. So, interesting for us to think about within our, our system and how we communicate with families and bring clarity to what to, to expect around kind of our tiebreaking systems for some of these academic awards. So, in recognizing that our primary goal, as I, as I led with, has been to think about access. And how do we make sure that our approach to Act 95 and Wisconsin Guarantee is really reducing and addressing barriers to access and choosing measures that increase access or that most students have access to? We've tried to work through what are some of the places in, in some of the numbers that Mr. Cox has shared that we're seeing barriers to access and how might we address them? So, the first here is, as Mr. Cox noted, if you take all your classes and you attend full-time all year, you can get 21 credits by the end of six semesters. We do have some programs that allow for more and those programs are often based on application or based on room, right? Ms. Sam Wolf, who sat here previously, would tell you that there was an overwhelming interest in summer school PE and health, that we could not meet all the demands. We had more students that wanted to take it than we could meet. How was that factoring into the total number of credits that students are able to attain? And if it's something that not all students have actually access to, is that something we should be considering as a criteria? We recognize that we could cap it and say, okay, we're only going to look at student credits 21 and below to try to even that playing field. We also recognize there are some work-based learning experiences that might increase the amount of credits a student is able to get. There are others that might actually decrease the amount of student, or credits a student's able to get. Perhaps their work-based learning experience takes a longer portion of their day and they're not here in the building to do that work. So, we know how much we celebrated the CTE presentation a few weeks ago, how excited we were about those opportunities. We're seeing there's passable, we don't want to disincentivize those programs as we approach this. So, one thing we thought about. Another thing we considered was advanced placement test scores instead of credits. We recognize we could have a student who's transferring into the Brawny area High School their junior year. Maybe the district they came from didn't have any AP credits previously. So, they're coming in already at a disadvantage because they don't have those AP credits. So, we did think about, could we instead look at AP test scores, students who are scoring at a certain level? In, in playing that scenario out here, we saw not all students who take the course choose to take the test. We also know each test is $110. And so, there's a fee associated with that, again, another barrier to access that we run up against. We did look at, what if we included dual credit options with AP credit options? So, Mr. Cox showed you the disparities between departments, some departments having a lot of AP, others having none. What if we included dual credit? Some of our, specifically our CTE, our department that's not represented within AP, they do have dual credit offerings. Would that be something that we would want to consider? It would give us more representation across, across departments and offerings. Again, some programs that not all students have access to still provide more opportunities for dual credit. Again, the STEM Academy is an example where some of our students are able to go above and beyond the number of dual credit opportunities that they have. We know some students at our TWE program, automatically when they get through the program, you earn 14 to 17 dual credits as well. Both of those programs require an application and not all students have access to them and that they're not available at all times. So, another factor for us to weigh as we prioritize access. Weighted grades has been an approach that some other area districts have taken on this. We obviously would need to determine a system for what this look like and which courses are weighed and how they're weighed differently. We know that there's a lot of conversation with what that could look like. Some of the most, some systems that do weight grades look at specifically AP courses. When we look at our list of students this past year, we had many, many students who had the same GPA and the same number of AP courses. So, even if those AP courses were weighted, it wouldn't necessarily break the tie for us in that way and could have some other implications for how we think about what's advanced and what coursework is considered weighted in those ways. So, there are four different possible criteria and considerations that we brainstormed with the high school team trying to think about. How do we make sure we approach these criteria and provide the most access? The last consideration here that we've thought through was thinking about, is there value in us better aligning the criteria from academic excellence award to our approach to Act 95 and what would that look like? The academic excellence award does use ACT as the first primary tiebreaker. We do have a VHS administration of the ACT, it is required by the state and it's available to all students at no cost and it's provided during the school day. So, that would be one consideration. All students do have equal access regardless of whether you've transferred in your junior year, regardless of whether, you know, you can pay to take ACT multiple times. There's one administration that all students have access to. We do know it can be seen as a high stakes test. This next year, we do have, we have shifted to our 9th grade students will take the pre-ACT twice. They'll take it once as a 10th grader. Pre-ACT follows a very similar format to the ACT to try to help students acclimate to that sort of testing environment and that format for the test. It also can be predictive of the ACT, so students have an idea where they may score. Mr. Cox and his team have also built in some different ACT prep opportunities for students, free to all students. free to all students, to be able to practice for the ACT to mitigate some of the high stakes nature of a test like the ACT. We also recognize that the ACT does not rely on credits or on course selection requests. So as we've thought through this process, we know that many of our families and students want to be very proactive. They want to build out their four-year plan and they will use, some will use this criteria to determine how they approach that four-year plan. We recognize that as a district, we want to provide as much access as possible and also have to balance different considerations of that. If Brian gets, or Mr. Cox gets course requests, eight students want to take AP chemistry and that is on their four-year plan and they're looking at this as an AP course and it's only eight students, that doesn't mean our minimum course requirements. If he runs that course to give those students that AP course, it could mean that general chemistry has large, large class sizes at 32. And so then we're weighing different priorities within our system or we need to say, no, AP chemistry is not an option. And then we recognize what the implications of that could be for our students. So recognizing that relying on the ACT doesn't, takes away those factors of credits earned or some of those course selection requests that could be problematic. Similarly, for the families that were really hoping to get into summer school PE and we just didn't have the staffing available to accommodate everyone, now suddenly whether or not you got into summer school PE gives you an extra .5 credit or an extra space in your schedule to take another class or another AP class. And again, so those are some factors that would be barriers to access. We also recognize that the ACT is not contingent on access to exclusive programming or course offerings. So I named, if the STEM Academy allows students to go above and beyond in terms of the number of credits, we also have some other programs that we have some really positive data on that could be impacted in a negative way by this. Our Avid students, then the Avid program are locked into an Avid elective every year. That is not an AP course. If they weren't in the Avid elective, could they be taking another AP course at that time? Right? So that will be a factor. Or similarly, our TWE students, there are required course sequences for our TWE students that might then hinder their ability to think through what this looks like. So again, ACT is not contingent on any of those programming options, either creating advantages for some students or creating disadvantages for others. We also recognize that there's more variability within ACT scores. There's a range of 1 to 36, different than total credits. Most students are falling in 18 to 21, so more ties there. And similarly, AP courses, there's zero to six offerings at most, potentially seven depending on which year you're there. So as we try to weigh, we recognize just inherently the requirements of Act 95 and what it requires of us as a district, but then trying to think about how do we layer on this idea of access and prioritize access within that. No criteria has been perfect. We did see that perhaps considering the ACT may reduce some of the barriers to access that some of our other criteria have created and what we've seen has played out as we've applied that criteria. So something for us to consider, recognizing the challenges that this poses in general. We did play around a little bit with the data this year to see, okay, if we kept the same criteria but put them in a different order, what would that look like? So we did take our 23 students who were in the top 5% of the class. Obviously, the 23 that we have were determined by the order of criteria that we laid out, the total number of credits, AP credits, and then ACT. If we flipped that and put ACT first instead of total number of credits, five students in the top 5% would change, right? So almost a quarter of those students would be different if we went by ACT. Similarly, then if we did put AP credits as the first criteria, seven of the top 5% of those students would be different. So the order of the criteria plays a relatively large factor here in how we're considering moving this forward. We know which criteria students have more access to along the way. With that then, it's also just important to name some other work underway. Anytime we're talking about grades and GPA, it's important for us to name that we are leaning into standards-based teaching and learning as a district. This will be our work with new educators, not just new educators, all educators when they return next week, as we continue to focus on standards-aligned instruction, assessment, and reporting aligned to grade level standards. So as we think about that, please know that there's a whole other body of work that is helping us to think through and make sure that our grading practices leading to that GPA are really aligned and representative of the grade level standards that we know are rigorous for our students. So with all of that, we come tonight just thinking about what our approach for the class of 2027 will be. We know that the board approves and moved forward with the criteria last January. We moved forward with DPI and were granted a one-year waiver. We will need to reapply this next year. Even if we're keeping the same criteria, we would need to reapply. If we're changing the criteria, we would need to reapply. As far as course selection timelines, course selection begins in January. Here at the high school, course guide is typically available prior to winter break. We think about our community and educating our families. We'd like to be able to tell them the criteria earlier on so they can factor that into how they approach their students' course scheduling. Of course, the caveat with all of this is we may never even need the criteria this year, as we didn't our first year. I wanted to open the conversation and just share a bit about what we've learned so far in trying to prioritize access and again, some of the maybe unforeseen consequences that we didn't, we didn't expect early on. And now as we've taken what we learned, we wanted to make sure we could share that back with the board, your consideration as we consider the class of 2027. So we'll pause there and open it up for questions, comments.
Chris's question. I just gotta, I gotta say something about your question and your spot on answer. Former manager, I won't date myself, but years ago, when I attended the UW University of Wisconsin-Madison, black students, we made up .9% of the student population. 30-plus years later, we make up 2.2% of the population. I watched, one of the things I'm not proud of with my alma mater, I watched them get rid of programs specifically targeted for getting black students. The Academic Advancement Program was an amazing program at UW. And what I loved about it, it took in totality the student's full body of work. Not all students are great test takers. You know, there are other opportunity gaps that may have prevented that student from being able to attend school on a regular basis. Could have been the brand winner of the family, whatever their case may be. That program took into account those opportunity gaps and really brought the student in, got them resources while they were there. And I watched a ton of my friends graduate from the University of Wisconsin-Madison, go on to be engineers. My best friend works for Ford, creates the suspension for SUVs. One of my friends is a doctor who has his own firm in Chicago. All graduates of the Academic Advancement Program that no longer exist. So I think by the University of Wisconsin-Madison not participating in the direct admit program is on purpose, is strategic, it's meant to keep us out of the University of Wisconsin-Madison. And you said it best, it's screening. It allows them to screen the students who apply for admission to the college. And it's disgusting to me.
I'll piggyback off that. I remember they had a people prep program. That led a people program in a very successful way to engage with younger students to lead into the people program, which itself was very successful. And they cut that because they didn't see an ROI in it. Similar thing. If I can lead into a question though. I am concerned about the way that we talk about access. I feel like there's a bit of a myopic view on what access means because I hear in the background economic access, testing fees or things like that. I hear bureaucratic access, not having to navigate the paperwork. But shifting to a high-stakes test offered at once on one day strikes me as itself a tremendous barrier, particularly when we talk about neurodynamics students, because I hate the term neurodivergent or just data. Talk about our neurodynamics students, like showing up for a high-stake test, it's really, really hard to get accommodations for if you've got a 504 or an IP. They're less likely to give you accommodations for that state test, all administer all at once than when you retake it, because you're gonna have to retake it. When you retake it and you get accommodations for multiple days or time, whatever. So I, I wonder as we're debating this, if we can keep in mind a more holistic view of what access might mean. And I will admit my own biases. I hate the idea of high-stakes standardized testing and this being used in this way. I am much more likely, if I'm choosing between the lesser of two evils, I'm much more likely to take a hard look at weighted grades than I am. But I've made my feelings about high-end pack test or high-end states testing clear. So I just wanted, that's kind of a question, I guess, about how we think about access, but also a statement of where my biases are. I don't know if you need to respond to that, it's just mental garbage. There we go.
I have the same concern about the high-stakes testing, but I see, I really do appreciate that there are prep opportunities that, because I know that can be an economic access issue that I appreciate that we're trying to take some of those barriers away. But I'm trying to sit, process through, I think I've made my opinions about this clear in past meetings. So I'm still trying to process through like, what are we trying to accomplish and what do we as a district want to accomplish? And I keep thinking that if you are in the top 5% and you're at a tiebreaking level and the first criteria to break that tie is an ACT score, for example, you're probably not going to have trouble getting into Madison. And I mean, that's fantastic, that they have, that's wonderful. And I want to encourage that. And I think having the, you know, academic excellence does encourage that. But maybe having some different criteria helps open some doors for students that are maybe taking a little bit different path. So I guess it's something I want to at least put out there. Are we just, are we trying to open doors that may, again, if you have a 4.0 and you've really, there's a lot of, these are academically talented students to a 201, you know, all of them. I don't know, I just struggle, I still struggle with the ACT. I see where it's a, there's a lot of pros for using it. I recognize that.
In the spirit of like the conversation and I think about narrative of access, right? So that's one piece, but how do we increase opportunity and how do we increase impacts in centering our equity framework and that? I think we have a student on IP because of hearing impairment and the impact of going into the pandemic on these devices and virtual learning. By the end of the pandemic, and we could come back at the same time, we can leave really because of other issues, that total accumulation of impact at that time, there was so much catch-up. And that's, again, I talk about it often about the impact that this district has had for us to catch up with my student on that IP. So I think about other things, you know, other criteria of like first generation access to these opportunities. I was first generation to go to college in my family. So yeah, my, all of them are incredibly smart. First male in my family to get into college. So I just want to shift the narrative, if we can, in that direction, to your point, narrative and the aspects of high-stakes testing. I just, I don't know, I don't know what that looks like, but just to bring that into the fore of whatever we discuss, I think centering. And again, I think, Dr. Blair, you've mentioned this several times and what we talked about are actively saying that we're not lowering standards or what we're, we're trying to do as a district, we're maintaining a high level of standards for our students and our community. It's not lowering standards. That's not the question.
Yeah, go ahead, Joel.
Yeah, I guess since we're kind of sharing our thoughts on this, the thing I keep coming back to is that I hate this, right? And that every option we are talking about is a bad option because we don't like the job we're being asked to do. So we can, we can compare all these options and we can all talk about everything we hate about each option, but it doesn't get us anywhere and we're gonna keep doing this every year. The thing that worries me when we start talking about things like weighted grades is that that is a fundamental drastic change to how we do grading in this district. That would be a step we'd be taking in response to a law that we kind of hate. My preference would be let's just flip a coin and choose a, or one of the options we talked about was, or I think it's in the scholar program, we talked about this, this random selection, we draw names out of a hat. Whatever it is, I'd rather we just pick an option and move forward frankly, because there's gonna be no good options.
Sure, I'm gonna push back just in one way. I think that, you know, weighted grades was around before this existed. Now this, this is part of a push to make do more ranking in that. But with the increase in programs and AP offerings, there's an increased need to differentiate what all that means. So I don't know that I see it in the same way as a response. This might be more of an impetus, but I see like longer-term trends here that are important to acknowledge. I agree that I think the impetus is garbage. I mean, this is just, it's bad governance from the state. But, but I think my comments towards like, I would lean more towards that, you know, engaging in a discussion about weighted grades than standardized test scores comes from a place of like, I hate standardized test scores as a thing. But as, but the weighted grades, I think there's also other things that play there.
Yeah, I, what I, in addition to kind of the other stuff we talked about, what I don't like about weighted grades is it's gonna be a value judgment no matter how you do it. You have to assign a weight to a particular course of study that what's difficult for me might not be difficult for Corby and vice versa. And how do you do that without introducing new bias into the system and making the problem worse?
Or just instead of making a tiebreaking criteria, we now weigh grades. But then conversation about what to weigh comes back to what would we want to use as tiebreaking criteria? I mean, right? I don't, so that's just my personal thing is why would we weigh grades when the fundamental piece of that decision lies in potentially a tiebreaking criteria?
And what we're recognizing too is that perhaps even within the tiebreaking criteria that we've already laid out, we are incentivizing certain programs and disincentivizing other programs just based on, which programs can allow more credits, which programs have specific requirements that might not. And we don't yet know the long-term implications of that, right? And how important this will be for families and how much they will factor this into their course selection, what that could look like long-term for the longevity of some of our programs. But I think that is the really difficult position that we're in here and kind of why we came back to looking at what was there for us to explore within academic excellence? What could be the benefits of ACT first? There's no program that's disincentivized or advantaged with the ACT, so that was one consideration, but recognizing the many, many factors.
I mean, the piece that I just want to quick elevate is I feel like this legislation has now made high schools, college admissions deciders. We're doing the job of what universities had to do to look at a holistic student and make a decision about coming to an institution now that onus is falling on us. And so just my personal view, as I agree with the hatred of this, is because we're talking about stories of students that have scholarship in so many capacities and we are being asked to pass judgment on what we value most. And I firmly, firmly oppose elevating the traditional way that we view academic excellence. So that is now, folks know my stance as a board member, but I just, I struggle when that is the default of what we think has historically meant a successful student. I just so want to push back on that and that's why I struggle to put value on any of these pieces because no matter what, it gives a value to something that doesn't speak about the whole experience we're trying to really elevate in our district.
What's been the feedback received from parents and students? I've gotten some feedback from parents and it's been kind of remotely timed, so I'm curious now what you've been hearing.
Yeah, so I've received a few phone calls over the summer and some were more shocked because their student had a 3.97, 3.92 and that they weren't in the top 5%. When I explained to them the math behind it, they said, wow, we've got to go with a lot of really talented kids. I said, we do. I think that's a sign of the systems that we've built in this school district to bring not only hydraer but high support for students to make those accomplishments. I think one of the things that comes challenging and not that my opinion matters on this, but when we talk about weighting grades, the only thing I would add to the conversation there is that at the end of the day, it forces us to place that same value judgment on something. And depending on where the board chose to stop with that determines ultimately that we're just kicking the can down the road or right back where we were again. And so in many places, weighting grades is the easy way out, frankly. It is. And it's one of those things that, as I stated it to be. And it's one of those things that, as I stated at the beginning of this, this act is forcing us to do something that we're all vehemently against. We're here to serve our community and our students and make sure that we uplift all of what Dr. Holi Mahalman has been cited as saying, because they're individualized genius, right? And so I think this is going to be a tough conversation in that because there's a lot of opinions on it. There's a lot of thoughts. But I will tell you that most of the thoughts that I have garnered from different families are geared towards what's affecting my child's mind, our children. So that's the tough spot for the board right now that I want to elevate for the community is you all are charged with all of our kids, not just a kid. And so that's something that I would like to elevate, just so that the community is aware that this is not an easy decision.
I do think, Meredith, your question about community feedback, I also have had families that just want to know earlier and they want to know that their criteria will perhaps be consistent. What can I expect from my eighth grade student for the next three years? We know that the last two classes came into this high school with that 95 not being intact and not being legislation and approached their course scheduling, however they approached it. As we think about our rising eighth grade or rising ninth grade class, I think families are just asking for, some have opinions about exactly what that would look like and recognize which criteria might best fit their student. And others are just interested in understanding what that may look like and can they decide how important this is going to be for them? Because we do have, we will continue to elevate the stories, the many students who've gotten in, regardless of what was the top 5 or top 10%, or the students who got into the top 5% and chose a different school altogether. And we want to uplift both, but we can't escape the reality that this is legislation and we need to make sure that we're compliant with that. And for some families, that will be an important part of their story.
And I will share just one last piece too, that is, I have had some families with freshmen, their first freshman coming in, where in their schedule, they had originally selected a study hall because they wanted to make sure that transition year went well. They've since reached out to pull that study hall off their kid's schedule because they want to risk that and that easy transition and smooth transition because they don't want to be left out of something three years from now, right? So again.
That story, holding those things, that just feels so yucky to me. Because that could be a student's mental health and wellness held up with, I want to be considered by the time I'm a senior. And that's not to belittle or diminish the amazing acceptance to the institutions we have in this state, but that just feels so complex for families. And at the root level, if a family is debating that strongly about one specific scenario and now we have to look at it as broadly as we have to look, to your point, there's just no way that this feels like it goes in a direction that's, yeah.
I think we need to accept that there's no good solutions. Pick the best of the bad solutions and set it and leave it so that there's consistency.
And they'll leave it. I appreciate it.
Yeah, Joe, I agree with that, but I think there's also like, what, I want to make sure that we're not inadvertently incentivizing something that is actually harmful for our kids. And I'm, you know, that example of taking out a study hall that really could help a student achieve academically at a greater level in order to accumulate points. And we don't want to incentivize that. I think that's a disservice to our students. But I feel like, this is where, yeah, the struggle. Yeah, I noticed, you know, putting in there just a kind of a, like, anything over this number of credits. I think there's a, I like that, that it doesn't incentivize just.
Rounding.
And I mean, I also like the idea of expanding the, you know, AP courses to include the dual credit courses. I think that still captures, this would be, I mean, these are just my thoughts. And again, I feel like we're going to see unintended consequences with anything that we promote because that's what this is going to do. I do still really struggle with the single ACT test, just for several reasons and also, I don't know, just everything I had said before, I just really.
Can I ask another question, Mr. Cox, because I do value your opinion very much on this. And I find myself a little bit, maybe not at odds, but trying to understand. You know, you said that weighting grades is the kind of the easy way out. And I agree in the long haul that that solves some problems in an easy way. But I wonder when we're talking about the context of addressing this legislation, that ACT scores, using the ACT score feels to me like the easy way out. And engaging with a larger philosophical discussion about how do we get to something like that academic success program that Corby was mentioning, that might involve some sort of weighting, I don't even know, is, I don't know if it's certainly not the right answer, but do you see what I'm pushing back to?
Yeah, no, and I appreciate the pushback because this is something that when this whole thing first came out, like the kind of in the moment, in the fire, being the principal, you're like, okay, we're weighting grades and we move on to the next problem. And then the more we thought about it, and I want to, you know, lift up, I'm saying, with Dr. Claire and others in our district, that really, we had a lot of discussion around this. And I think it's important, just as we are here, that it pushed my thinking to step further and further away from that. Because when I started thinking specifically about the students that I'm now going to have to walk into an advanced orchestra class and say, but it's not AP, so this is less than maybe an AP human geography class, which actually doesn't have a written component to it in terms of the AP exams. So does that mean that that AP is less valuable or important than an AP calc or an AP psych? And so that's where it's like, where do you draw that line? And again, it is messy. Where I can tell you that the best of the bad options is that ACT doesn't feel like I'm making the decision for a kid, you know, in that, that moment, right? And that's not a good answer. It really isn't. But I don't know that in any of this, there's a good answer for kids. And then I think this is one where I hope I'm not making too bold of a statement here, but I think we need to challenge our legislators to review this and then continue to work the problem. It's no one's fault, right? But it is our problem to address on behalf of our scholars. So how do we keep continuing that conversation until we refine and create a better product?
So I want to quickly lead into Mr. Cox's response. And also, Mr. Cox, please don't ever say that your voice like matters in everything that you say and do.
And the three of you being present here, I mean, is so necessary for this conversation.
I want to correct that. Please always, your voice matters and we work in service with you. Well, none of the options are anything that the mindset of this board and the leadership or anyone in this room wants to do. When we look at the three options and overlay them on our equity framework, the one item that has no access points or any issues with access points and every student has the ability to do is the ACT. As long as we are a district that has application process for programming, as long as we are a district that has application process for STEM academies and things that, that is not access for every child in our organization, which is exactly what we promised in our equity framework is to make sure that we add access. So this is not about promoting a single, a single test. I'm not a fan of it, but, and at the same time, of those three, which one of them is the vessel line to our equity framework is that it's the ACT. Because everyone has the support, equal access to the support, everyone, because we are providing them, everyone has access to be able to take it. Can I say that about the other two options?
I will say in regard to that with opportunities, when we try to build out just in my short time here, we purchase ACT prep books for every single student in the junior class that wants one. We provide multilingual support in those prep sessions. And so we've tried to limit every possible barrier within this that we can. Again, it's, it's went through its first iteration this past year and we're automatically coming together at the beginning of this year with our teaching crew that has been trained by ACT to better prepare later on the next piece of that. To again, hopefully not make it to our calm down to the first time I've ever experienced this test or first time I've seen questions like this and so forth. So just so you're aware of that.
I still come back to, I mean, are we, we're facilitating admission to a program for students who will likely already be admitted? I don't know. I do think that there are, I struggle with it. I do, I think the, you know, expanding the definition for access, I think that a single test, the stakes can be so high that it is a, again, I mean, I just don't like any of it. So it could be that, you know, I'm picking this one that I just really dislike, but I could make an equally compelling argument that I dislike all of them. So that's very not helpful. I guess I would, I'd like to, I would like the legislature to take another look at this. Yeah, because I think Jen put the, you know, we are arbitrarily deviating college admissions criteria based on not the whole student, just a snapshot. And so it is.
It may tell us that there also are certain criteria that we're allowed to consider and others that we aren't, right? So I think that's something else that we've had discussions about in terms of the academic criteria.
Yes, for this waiver, we're only allowed to consider academic criteria. There's like kind of two sections of the statute. And what that TPI is offering a waiver for is the section that says GPA is the sole criteria, but not the academic achievement is the sole criteria.
So that to me says that the fundamental problem is that we're being asked to be a college admissions board, but we're not allowed to use the tools to take a holistic inventory of a student to do it.
Right.
That's the fundamental problem that this law has put us in, is that, you know, a college admissions board would have the tools to judge a student more holistically. And we're not allowed to do that. And this is where when I was pushing back, my pushback is, I think we should do the hard work of figuring out how would we define academic success in a holistic way? Because it might serve us for this policy, it might serve us for a lot of other policies, but it might guide how we allocate resources to have a better understanding of what we mean by holistic academic success, holistic student success. And so, you know, I would be interested in pushing towards that conversation. This speed bump that the legislature's put before us, you know, sucks up, down and sideways. And like I said, it's lazy law writing to get to a certain purpose, but. So are we saying that we need to like, we need to vote on something here soon or later than later?
Right.
But it's not, the thing is the, your conversation right now is not listed on the agenda as a vote at this time, but we professionally ask that it's not a January call.
Oh, right. And we're here to try to be in service of families, so recognizing that that doesn't serve anyone either.
And it doesn't need to be, you know, I like, I like some of the criteria of capping, you know, credits and expanding, you know, access. And I also see that there is some value in keeping consistency for families, but I don't know how much weight to put on that and then sitting too far removed. So that's why the three of you sitting here is helpful. How big of a deal is consistency to families or is it?
Yeah, I think it's really big, especially when we don't have, navigate a lot of conversations, especially being in order of the district that, well, I had an older student who came through three years ago and that wasn't the way it was. And I was like, that wasn't here, sorry, you know? And so there will come a time that, I think, we have so many families that have more than one scholar in our system for them to be able to lock in with whatever our best of the worst decisions are, that we're able to then navigate that and show that consistency. And again, I've got a 14-year-old myself and a 12-year-old, if people are planning, right, if they're planners, I think just knowing that what we're deciding in the end is a consistent thing at least gives some solace in that.
And I think speaking to consistency, knowing right now there are two separate criteria for this and then for academic achievement, we did look, it changes those top students. When you use those different criteria, those students change. And so I think it's really important that we look at trying to align those because we're saying, in either scenario, we're being asked to judge our students and make them the same. So families understand why.
But am I interpreting your comment to be that maybe it's good that those aren't the same? Because then we're benefiting more students with either a possible scholarship or a possible pathway to admittance that otherwise it's like a double win for the same families?
Yeah, could be.
I thought that was a really interesting way of just saying, right, trying to open up where we're putting value and access in all sorts of facets. That those are two benefits potentially coming out of here as a senior, that maybe it's nice that those are not.
I think when it's admittance into another opportunity and that's, I think, the difference for me is the admittance to another opportunity. Are we recognizing students who have achieved academic excellence but may not have test day superiority? And those students are still going to do quite well in their next endeavors. I don't know. I mean, that's the part.
I'm curious what, without, without weighing grades, what might we consider in that facet? Because I do, when you think about academic excellence, if I can maintain a 4.0 having taken a bunch of AP classes, I'd face value that looks like, well, yeah, why wouldn't that be so obvious and so easy for you all to just do that? But what we recognize to be the depth and breadth that we offer across content areas, I'm super curious what even your team might consider, knowing the scope of coursework that's available, what you'd see as just that broader understanding of achieving a 4.0 at a high level of rigor in a few different pathways? I can't help but just be curious about like case studies. I know you have, right, excessive ways that certainly don't belong at the board table to be able to see like, what are our students doing? What does it look like for a student who took six AP classes versus a student that has a 4.0 that took this type of coursework and took every art class we offered? And we've talked about those conversations here. I just wonder if there's space to live in this kind of weighted grade scenario without needing to do that as a formal, because I just worry about taking a legislative act that we all low and then I'm creating a totally different system in our district. But yet trying to have this concept of recognizing academic excellence because that is the intention of it, because I still really struggle too with the ACT piece. I appreciate all the pieces about access and I just have that, you know, previous teacher of me that's like, oh, it's just, but it's one day. So if that's of homework, requests.
I think one of the things where we inevitably will come to the table of talking about if and when that's done, I think this will be requested, is you're still putting the value on breadth or depth.
Or like you said, or is there any?
You know, because either you're going to have some students that, that have a passion over content, specifically subject content, and want to go as deep as possible in this space. With scheduleizer, not going to be able to take full range, but it's because they just want to go deep. That shouldn't be looked at less than something like that. I want to experience as many things as possible across. So we'll be, we still end up in the same competition. What do we value as an organization?
If I can voice this out as well, and this is just an idea, this may be more of a pipe dream than anything, but I'll all these voices out. When we talk about legislative action and continue to work this problem, one of the things that I think is unique in this law is that if a scholar knows for a fact they're not going to go to UW-Madison, but they're in that top 5%, that spot is still locked up.
Yeah.
And so the idea that within what if we talk about navigating this legislation, navigating or adding an amendment to that to where scholars aren't planning to use that, do not want to use that, allow that to go to the next person in line, that helps mitigate some of this fact of tie-breaking criteria altogether, right? And so I think there's things that can happen from a multiple number of advantage points as we continue to work our system, as we continue to call legislators to revisit this and add these components to it. Because again, this law may be sitting there locked up, that never gets used. And then again, less access for more of our scholars that have a 4.0 and they're ready to roll if given the opportunity.
Yeah, I think that's what is really weighing heavily on me. If you have a 4.0 and a 34 above the ACT, you're probably okay. And I, there's other students that could really benefit from these opportunities that we may now, we're inadvertently the gatekeepers.
I think another next step for our team, we can also go back. We don't yet know, what is the long-term impact on course selection? Will this change how students engage and want to do electives or not, right? What will that mean for some of the programs that we're really proud of in our district if it feels as though those programs aren't incentivized through this? So we only have one year of course selection data, but we can also go back and look and see, are there any early signs of what this might mean for what that programming access looks like?
I have one more question. If we were talking about expanding possible, you know, options, that would be the AP dual credits, is there a way to just benchmark? And we, you know, setting credits at 21, well, what if then you have a minimum of three AP? You know, how, instead of incentivizing just adding them up and ratcheting, sort of collecting like a, it satisfied this benchmark, okay, we need another one, okay, who has satisfied this benchmark? And then we, of those, then the ACT may be an appropriate tiebreaker at that level?
Yeah, that's an interesting way.
That way it's not so all or nothing incentivize the.
I do think, if I can, you know, comment on that as well, because again, I do think, if I can, you know, comment on that as well, because again, some of the stuff that Ms. O'Connell and her team deal with more so is the kids that are continually driving, that's their grind, or they've grown themselves to enough. They're still trying to push because they think that they have to to get to this thing that they're probably gonna get to anyway, quite frankly. And so it's that idea that, you know, school is the place where we need to embrace the opportunity to not necessarily win all the time. And then if you run into some of these challenges, we have a supportive system that continues to bring it up. And it's okay then to not give an A in one class and still be in the running for certain things. So I do think that that idea gives more flexibility to mental health and wellness of our students, which I will tell you, at high functioning schools, that's as real a problem as it gets.
Yeah.
With our high performing academics, if they stress themselves out more than anyone else could.
I would be curious if that type of approach would, how that would have broken down for the tiebreaking, if you had the, you know, benchmark of credits and at least three AP, you know, three or more AP. Something just, I'm not sure what the specifics would be, but just. And then have, you know, if there still needs to be a tiebreaker at the end in the ACT. I mean, something, but it's still, I don't know.
Yeah, we could certainly play around with that, right, with different thresholds, right? Even if we go down to 20 credits, does that give students the way to have a study hall? Right? Could we even build that buffer in to how we approach that? So we do have the data from this class, it's been fascinating to look through and resort the columns and think, what would this mean? And better understand what that looks like. Of course, recognizing these are solely three data points about students who have so much more to tell us and have so much more to their story, but what are the ways that we can kind of mitigate some of the potential harm? Or the feeling of creating harms for the.
One more question, just so that I get a full understanding. What is the reasoning for locking in a position if a student does not take the position and it not opening up? What is the reasoning?
You'd have to ask some question on that, because I can't, I can't put my, I can't figure out why that wouldn't still be available to someone else. Because the university's already expecting that spot to be taken, right? It's already factored into their equations.
And so, and I ask that if we, you know, the power that we likely have to push of kind of legislative review amendment, if they answer the reason behind why they lock that in, so I can just something about.
Thank you.
If we've got some next steps, I've been thinking here.
I mean, super appreciative, your voices, staff voices, whatever you can help bring to this discussion. This is certainly not something I want to do as a board member, in isolation of the work that you all are doing at the ground for this, so. Thanks, until next time. I don't even know where we are now. Oh, the person that's been standing, stretching the legs over there, ready for some budget updates. All right, yeah. Welcome, Chad Wheezy.
Hey there, I'm Pete O.
And Pete as well.
The good news is ACT 95 is not the agenda for our budget screening or annual meeting.
Uh huh, the good news, this is just so straightforward.
A month from now, we'll get to focus on the important work of the annual budget. Tonight's a little preview of what that we think will look like in a month. That's pretty good, we need, we need to roll it.
Yep, go.
All right, we can do it. All right, so tonight, we are here to essentially hand over our draft budget book to the board. We've had five, six days to look at it, effort, we dropped off, and we will take feedback tonight if there are changes. The key is this is a draft, is what we're, our team is recommending to the board that would be presented at the annual meeting. As a reminder, this is still our best guess, and even if we tweak this tonight, we don't get all the numbers in terms of third Friday count, and what we get for state aid, and finalized property values until we put it all together in October. So this is our best guess at this point in time in terms of what our budget's gonna look like. Our outcomes tonight, we want to present the draft budget book to all of you, if you have questions. We want to talk through what's changed since the last time we updated the board in terms of where we were tracking for what would land in this budget. We do have an estimated tax impact right now. To me, that is not headline news. If Verona Press or anyone chooses to run with it, so be it, but this is a draft budget. You guys are not passing a budget until we get to October, and we do have a three-month look ahead to make sure we get there. So a few things that we do believe were addressed in this budget book. We, for the time being, would have an average tax increase that would be less than the rate of inflation. We have built a compensation package into this budget book. The board has essentially pre-approved that in the form of a CPI increase for our staff. There are staffing efficiencies embedded in here, where we did downsize our staff in line with slower than expected student enrollment, and we've continued the strategy of Fund 39 debt management, and we will highlight that again tonight. A few things that were newer to the budget book did include a section on leadership strategies this year that we did highlight that debt management. In this budget book is our change in healthcare providers, which was a budget savings. That reduction in staff and that staff compensation package, overall impact of the work that we've done would be savings to our taxpayers. Certainly, we control the cost of healthcare with all the moves we've made over this last year, and we've sustained another investment in staff. The board's seen this before, this is the delicate balance we continue to make sure we keep an eye on in terms of running our school district, paying our people, managing debt, and also keeping an eye on what happens with taxes and no rate. So a few key pieces I wanted to call out to the board. One, the standard, all the standard stuff with the budget books in here are led by category, and lots of detail, lots of charts. Huge thank you to Pete, Michael Account, Marcy, and Karen, we'll put the finishing touches on this. But this is a year in the work to get to where this document is today. We've talked through the leadership moves that we've embedded in here. We did build out two newer sections that I wanted to highlight for the board. One is related to OPAP, and the board has dipped their toe into this a couple of times over the last year, including a piece of fund balance we pulled out the year before, but we continue to have an eye on OPAP. We'll talk a little bit about that in more detail tonight. And we embedded a tax bill summary section, and that's also a version of this is already on our website. And we added to the budget book just an explanation of what's going on with your tax bill, and a whole bunch more. What's changed since the last time we updated the school board on our budget? Pete landed estimated equalized property value. This was two days before we were actually gonna send this thing to print, but we made a few adjustments related to that in the budget book. Federal funding is out in the way, so that's eased a little bit. We have a recommendation to the board in terms of one-time increase to OPAP funding for the year, and slight changes to Fund 39 to fees, that is primarily in line with better guesses on what's gonna happen with equalized property value. So they want to pause here, and I know we have at least one town of Verona resident that I delivered this budget book to just this last week. I saw a deer in her driveway in the town of Verona.
Triggered her good watch.
And we've been through this, we've been through this a little bit in the 2023-24 budget with Fitchburg that had big swings in equalized property value. The town of Verona is getting clobbered year three in a row. 16%, 17%, and 21%. I reached out to the administration at the town, and have actually agreed to come speak at a town hall meeting to help try to clarify this. As a reminder to the board, when you see big swings in equalized property value, that's coming from one of two places. There was a bunch of new construction, which was actually not the case in the town of Verona. They had some new construction, but not a ton comparing to their existing property value. Or the Department of Revenue steps in, and they make an assessment that your properties are undervalued when it comes to their local assessment. And that's what happened, Fitchburg kind of got caught behind a little bit with their local assessed value. The Department of Revenue essentially comes in and says, this house has assessed value in the town of Verona at $500,000, and it's sold for $750,000. They take a holistic look at assessed values versus what happens on the open market of sale value, and they equalize that to make sure everyone's actually paying their fair share statewide. The issue with the town of Verona, and maybe potentially we may have to do a little more digging with the Department of Revenue, is they got hit with this three years in a row. So what that means is town of Verona residents carry a bigger burden in terms of their property value and what they have to pay in for all taxes, but certainly the taxes for our school district. You can see that over on the right. They've gone from, the town's gone from just about 7% to just about 9% of who's the percentage of the levy town residents own in just a matter of three years. So I wanted to call that out to the board. That is out of our control, but certainly I would expect if I'm gonna receive emails related to questions pertaining to property tax bills in our school district, my prediction this year would be a couple of folks in the town of Verona, because it's happening. That's why I'm taking the proactive measure. I'm actually meeting with the town administration out there on Friday, and we're gonna offer to kind of put together an agenda and dissect your tax bill, talk about the difference between assessed value and equalized property value, and do what we can to get ahead of the messaging that this is essentially out of the school district's control in terms of how properties are assessed in the town of Verona. And again, it happened to a much greater number of people with the city of Fitchburg a couple of years ago when they had big swings.
I think the town of Verona is going to be something that we need to keep an eye on, especially since it's not necessarily student-rich.
Yeah.
They are old folks.
I'm not at all.
Sure.
And Jana, you technically in the town too?
Yeah.
And it's a, it's a lot of, it's either young families that are kind of moving in with kids that haven't quite reached school age, or those who have students that have just exited the district. So the number of students in my area is not dense. But that may not be necessarily across the whole town, because there's not a lot of town residents, and it's gonna.
It is a thing, it is. So we'll continue to dig into it, and I think, I talked to Sarah Gaskell, who's the town's administrator. She said they are planning on a local reassessment this upcoming year that might help equalize some of this. And I don't know if it's just right now it's so out of whack in terms of assessed value and sale prices that the Department of Revenue keeps kind of pounding that mallet to try to get it straight. But yeah, it's significant. So I wanted to put that on the board's radar. These were estimated equalized property values, but from what Pete and I tracked, for the most part, the numbers that stay pretty solid between estimates and what we get in October are the places that we don't split with another school district. So Fitchburg is kind of like this until we actually find out. But the city of Verona and the town hold pretty true for us because they had their initial numbers. All right, a complete shift here, but I wanted to make sure the board knew we embedded this into the budget book. As a reminder, the school district in 2014 borrowed $35 million to create a standing account to offset the ebbs and flows of post-retirement benefits in our school district. The theory behind that, in a nutshell, was the price of borrowing money was very low at that time, so you get very low interest rates on the money you took the loan out for. And then they invested, we still have a brokerage account right now, that invested that $35 million with things that yielded higher percentages than the money that they invested. And we paid about $2, $2.1 million a year on that loan that sunsets in 2034. The theory in 2014 was the money we peel out of that $35 million account that was accruing interest through investment income would get us to 2034 with a $2 million payment a year, that we could set it and forget it in our budget, and it would all come together beautifully in 2034. We reported to you over the last couple of years, we had our eye on it, to the point we made an investment last year, and we're not gonna make it. And it is a thing that we'll have to address before the time we get to 2032. We think we might be two years short. And what that simply could mean is that in 2032, that we would have to make a loan payment and pay post-retirement benefits out of the district's local account. So this is a little infusion of cash to stretch out that OPAP account and kind of make it less painful when we actually get to the point where we're gonna have to make a decision of what we do with that by the time we get to 2034. So we are recommending, long story short, and I'll answer questions on this if you would like, we're recommending a $1.25 million contribution to OPAP. So instead of putting that towards debt prepayment or a fund balance deposit, we're recommending that we put money towards post-retirement benefits. There are a few things that we want to continue to keep our eye on. If, when we have the funds, Pete and I will continue to recommend making deposits into that account to get us as close to 2034 as possible. Because then when the debt payment falls off, we'll have the $2 million placeholder in our budget, and we'll have options in terms of paying post-retirement benefits. But that doesn't happen until 2034. Down the road, if interest rates are cheaper, we can take a look at redoing this thing, but right now they're too high. There's the possibility down the road of using fund balance. If there's two years we have to make double payments, it wouldn't be the end of the world if we had to peel a little bit of fund balance out to make ends meet by the time we got there. We need to, we need to continue to gradually potentially integrate general operating money into OPAP. One I would prefer to stay away from, but is in play, it's a thing for other school districts, would be take a look at existing post-retirement benefits. And that could be for existing retirees and our existing employees changing the tiered system we have in our handbook. That is ugly work. So I would prefer we stay away from this and make timely small deposits and have our eye on this issue down the road on an annual basis.
Cause am I correct in remembering that 2034 is also, I mean, we've done tiers, right? There's been proactive work to try to start to change what happens with post-retirement benefits. So how, yeah, I don't know if there's a question there, how does 2034 align with some of the tiers that are already changed and in play?
Not perfectly, but there will be, our most expensive retirees will slowly but surely phase out of the existing, the existing expense. And we have a less lucrative post-retirement benefit package for younger tenured teachers and full-time staff.
And most likely in 2034, we're going to have to look at another funding vehicle to continue.
Right, to cover the next big.
The cost doesn't end at 2034, it's just it should get lesser and lesser over time as our retirees change.
Yep.
Yep, so it will get less in consequence of time because we've tiered OPAP, but it's definitely, I think we want to take care of our longer tenured employees that are retiring and counting on that money.
Yeah.
And we, you know, I think we just want to make sure we keep an eye on the potential issue in our budget. Other questions on OPAP? But we did build that in here, and we did build an OPAP section within the budget book, so we were completely transparent with the board and our.
And so right now, you're saying that that 1.25 would be a shift from debt management? Is that what you're proposing with this particular dollar drop?
The main reason we have the opportunity this year is that's a, that's a Fund 10 operating expense, along with the $2 million payment of the loan. That comes out of our per pupil revenue limit related to what we get from the state and what we got from the past referendum. So this is our opportunity this year, because we have a surplus budget, to do it out of Fund 10. The only thing that it can be intermingled with Fund 39 is in the past, one of the things we've done with excess funding permission was make a transfer from Fund 10 to Fund 39 to prepayment that. So what we do this year, you can't, I wish we could, but we can't.
Take from Fund 39 and.
Can't take from Fund 39 and balance OPAP.
Got it.
The only way to do that would be another, another operating referendum, and we call out balancing the, balancing OPAP.
Right. Thank you.
The board is very familiar with. The board is very familiar with our five-year look ahead and a one-year look back. A few things have changed on there with what's going on with equalized property values and our recommendation tonight related to mill rate. I know we've had a lot of discussions around that. So the, what we got here and baked into this budget, we're calling out that we are predicting a drop in state aid. That's for a variety of reasons. The money we spent on the property purchase, that thing's in play. Our student enrollment's in play, but it's really how much, how much property value we have per student. We are a property-rich school district, more property-rich than the majority of the state, and we ended up taking a hit on state aid. The city of Milwaukee passed a huge $1 million referendum, and they have, they are positively aided school district. So when they have more state permission per pupil, they get more state aid. State aid comes from one pot of money, and that also has an impact on us. This is a, this is, I think Pete's best conservative guess. I think you're thinking, by the time we get into October, Pete, you're guessing that comes in the letter?
Yes. Yeah, I, I do think certain items are trending that way, that we're going to get a little bit more. But right now it's saying just under $25 million, but it's going to be, I think it'll be a little bit over $25 million, just the way I've seen the trends going up there for our staff.
Other things to highlight on this sheet that, again, you guys are all familiar with Fund 39 in the 2026 budget. We have a levy of right now an estimated $15 million. I think by the time we bring this back to in October, that will be higher. That there's a provision related to what we get from the state of Wisconsin in terms of revenue permission and state aid called Act 12 that Pete just found in the worksheet that I think DOR has put an update out on today that may give us another $600,000 of kind of room in our, in our levy. That may come into play in equalized property values, still have to, have to shuffle out. So we still do have a decent amount of deplacates work to do this upcoming year. This is a balanced budget with what we ended up putting into OPEB, and when it all shakes out, our recommended mill rate to all of you tonight is 1075, and that is related. And I, we did a tenured historical look there. I do think it, there's a message here that the board has continued to do what they can to keep the mill rate in check, and at the same time prioritize prepayment on debt and taking care of our staff.
Can I add one thing?
Please, Pete.
We could actually take that chart back for 40 years, and only one time will it be lower than this projected mill rate right now. And that was back in 2007.
2007, yeah.
And that's only by two cents. It's 10.73 cents. The data I found on DBI goes back to 1984, something very relevant. And it was still over $1 million at that time, but that, that's about, it's only about this low one time in the past four years.
Vegas ads and maybe a Prince reference tonight for the law.
Totally.
Almost important, you said.
Just what would you say about 1984? I guess the first two things.
All right, we're getting towards the end, and again, this number will change. I don't think we'll end up at 1075 by the time we get to October. This is our best guess right now. So our recommended increase on the levy is 6.6%. The net new construction, new property taxpayers on the books will be four or a little bit over 4%, meaning that the remaining existing taxpayers, we have to cover that remaining 2% to 2.5% of levy increase. I would not just can say that that's below the rate of inflation. We continue to take the mill rate down, and again, this is our best guess in time right now with prioritizing debt repayment and also keeping taxes in check. So our recommended mill rate tonight to you, that's built into the draft budget book, is 1075. It's still subject to change. If you all wanted to have a deeper conversation about mill rate tonight, we could, but again, the real conversation is tonight. Pre-month look ahead for in August, and it's almost done. The budget, we'll bring the budget book back to you to stamp it at the first board meeting in September, and we've got the third Friday count in September. We've got the budget hearing in the meeting in September. In October, we get equalized property value, state aid, our final levy, and the board approves the final budget. Pete sends that over in early November, and then we start the 2026-27 budget immediately. It's a repeat. We'll be right back at it. So can we get that last levy set? Questions or comments on where we're at?
Mr. Porco? I am just going to reiterate as another old town of Verona person that I appreciate the mill rate going down, because that's the one thing we can't control. And it has gotten weird out there with property taxes, and everybody feels it. And there aren't as many kids walking around reminding them why. Like, so I appreciate the work. I think we'll continue to be feisty about property taxes in the town at least.
I, I love the feisceness, and I, I think it's, it's on our team to do what we can to share as much information as we have and what we can control and what we can't.
I agree. Thank you.
I keep trying to make my house worth less, like I just take parts off. It looks awful. It's got to be worth less now. It hasn't, it hasn't helped.
Thank you.
Other questions or feedback related to this document? Because this will be, primarily this will be what we would present at the annual meeting.
Encouraging community access to this as well, folks to read if they want...
This will, once we, once we pass it in September, this will be posted on our website as the budget book, the longer draft, because this is what we bring to the annual meeting. This will be posted in the Verona Press two times and with a public notice, and then we will do our typical information sharing through our website and so forth.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for the deliveries.
You're very welcome.
Will we ever have a budget where we don't see the marbles balanced? I mean, just out of, just the graphic. I'm curious.
Want it to be just like...
Not here, but I do really believe it brings everything together. We could hammer that scale and these, town of Verona would be knocking down Dr. Clarity's office, and we don't do that.
Well, I like that it goes balanced. I'm just wondering if the graphic will always be...
We could maybe shift it up. Maybe we'll bring in new balance at the annual meeting. Just wondering if you want some more.
Or if they're to be lost.
All right.
Fantastic. Thank you.
That concludes the 137-minute... So, retainers report?
The slide to time ratio was a little heavy this evening. Yeah, because I admit I look at the number of slides and try to guess.
Yeah, Act 95, it's a stinker. Summons.
And we're all completely just...
I know.
I mean, there's nothing satisfying about any of that. So let's, Lori, any public comment I may be missing? Great, thank you. Support action. So, Ward, if you recall, we monitored operational expectation three at our July 7th meeting. We agreed and voted to defer the full vote on compliance of that OE to a later date, as at that time, administration was finalizing data gathering and final reporting on some data information that we had been enterprise of along the way. So the charge this evening, per your email, you were reminded again of all the information that we had in terms of how all of that data situation was remedied. You have the original OE monitoring report is in board docs and in your email. I did pull up the summary from that meeting in terms of any other discussion that we had. We had some discussion about an indicator language, but in terms of compliance or non-compliance, there was nothing of note for the remainder of the report that I recall and the notes signify. So really, I think it's, seems appropriate to me that we hone in on revisiting compliance, and that one indicator, OE 3.1, was kind of the crux of the delay.
My memory may be a little bit different, so then also...
Yeah, and I have a summary out with whatever it has.
I thought we had decided that it was not in compliance, but wanted to get the update on the fix, because just the, the fixes kind of like how it was handled was really well-done. So...
So the notes, can I read the notes?
Yeah.
Ultimately, there was agreement to hold off on taking action until the investigation concludes before making a decision on the monitoring report. So the motion, which was named from you, Meredith, was to table the vote on OE 3, and that's at 7 to 0.
I have no...
No, and that's why these notes, and that's the next quick agenda item we'll talk about too, but that's why these notes, I brought them up to just recap too, for the sake of what we talk about tonight. So really then, I, the board action really is then to, what do we want to do about the compliance piece of that?
Thank you. I appreciate the progress.
So in terms of just following kind of all of the rules, I think I'm going to, this seems fair, look at me. If I could take a motion from a board member to bring OE 3 back into discussion for the vote on compliance, would there be a motion from the board? Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Christopher. So a motion from John, second from Christopher. Any further, well, further, we need to have the discussion then about what we think the vote is in terms of the report itself being in compliance or not. And if there's further questions about the investigation, you know, we've had those opportunities, but I think this is where we are. What's the conclusion about OE 3 in terms of being in compliance or not?
I agree with Meredith that I think that it was handled exceptionally well. My problem continues to be with the semantics of non-compliance, because I don't think compliance, non-compliance is necessarily what we mean when we talk about how something's functioning. Like, that's my two cents. I will vote for, yes, this, this, this has happened. I think our admin team did a fantastic job with it, and we're going to have to call it whatever, but the system is functioning.
Do you have a sentiment on what your whatever is that you're going to call it?
Functioning. I don't know. I don't know. People hate it when I get into semantics, so I didn't actually think about this.
It's a good time.
Has intended, right? I mean, that's, is intention intended, and it's, it's working?
And I think that the ultimate, if we're going to be going into semantics, ultimately information was protected.
So my beef with it actually is like, not in the instance that we're in right now, but there are times when it's like, I don't want to say non-compliance because I feel bad about it. I don't generally feel bad about saying those sorts of things. But that language introduces something into the discussion that shouldn't be there. These should be the most unemotional discussions. Is the car running or not? I don't care if you love the car. I don't care what color it is. I don't care how comfortable it is. Just care if it's running.
So is the car running?
I think the car's running.
We've got to have this conversation once we go over to...
So I'm hearing from you too that you would be aligned with saying this report is in compliance.
I would say it's in compliance. I'd say it's not in compliance. I think by the indicator given, it's technically...
No, you can't say that.
I can. If I, if I've already told you that I don't care about the wording, I can, it's absolutely with utmost integrity that I can say, oh.
I mean, I actually, I actually agree with John on this one.
I love facilitating, right?
I'm sorry. I know. That's not helpful to anybody at all, but except for one person.
That is just abuse as hell.
All right, because I, I just, I would say it's not in compliance. However, that doesn't mean that things were not done extremely well. Can we have both of those things called noted?
I think, I think if we, if we weren't trying so hard, or if we weren't, you know, rubric to John's comment, where we're viewing non-compliance as a slap on the wrist, we wouldn't even be struggling over this, because the wording, based strictly on the wording of the indicator, no, it's not in compliance. There was an unauthorized release of confidential information. That doesn't mean I consider it to be a slap on the wrist or anything negative, because what we're judging Dr. Clarity on and the administration on is how they responded to that. And, or like, wasn't true in this case, but I can imagine a scenario where a non, like a breach happened because of faulty systems. That's not what happened here. But like, in this indicator review system, we're kind of, you know, a slave to what the indicator says. So if, if we're going to stay compliant on this, honestly, I don't even know that I have a problem with. We may as well give rid of indicators and have it just be a completely subjective assessment at, at report time, which I've kind of talked myself into might be a better system. Like, let's just take all the evidence and let us all make our own decision about whether the, you know, the overarching OE was met, which I think would be true here. But it's just these indicators. If we're, if we're going to say this is compliant, then let's throw the indicators out. But I don't think I'm in there.
And then there's also has to be the, and the non-compliant is not a ding.
Yeah.
That's right. It's, it's, this is, all right, so it's, bleh.
And this is the piece, when I think about what, what purpose these then serve, which again relates to a conversation we'll have shortly, if, if we note this is not in compliance because technically the phrasing as listed for the indicator was not met in that instance, it doesn't mean the remedy wasn't satisfactory, all of the things, we have that narrative to go with it. So then it's, when we revisit a year later, hey, so that thing that happened that we did note is not in compliance, let's just recap. How is that going? Right, it's a place for dialogue. It isn't a mark on a grading system that is, you know, yeah. But to the point of what's sitting in front of us, if we also say it's in compliance, then I feel like what are we even really doing? Because we're just smoothing it over for the sake of, we know that things got handled well, so let's just sort of say it's in compliance.
I mean, I'd rather go back and talk about Wisconsin and get it at this point.
I, I agree, Joe. I think that as it's written, it's not compliant, right? There was an unauthorized release, so we have to acknowledge that.
Yeah.
Like, but if I'm looking at the efficacy of our, our, our system, our schools, the question is, was data protected at all times? Yes, it was. It's a different question. It's not what we're being asked right now. So I would be fine with non-compliant, but...
With a gold star. That's how I would, yes. Like, because honestly, like, the steps that were taken in response was truly impressive.
Yeah, the level of work, Jason, we're nodding at your team.
Yeah, just fantastic. And that reassures, you know, me. If anything, this highlights how well and cohesively our systems work together, because things are going to come up. And if we aren't going to say that this is, you know, there was an issue that caused us to be non-compliant, however, it also allowed some great things to come to the surface that we should be recognizing. So can we hold that in simultaneously? Non-compliant, and it allowed like really excellent work to come to the fore?
I will.
I'm looking at you because...
My, my only, my question is, is, and also just for, I can, so I can help our team come to understand of how we submit these reports moving forward, it also sounds like that we've taken exceptions out of, out of all of our monetary reports.
Just going to bring that up.
I, I've said several, I don't know what that means, like, I don't know when I would use that compared to not compliant. Like, that's always been fuzzy to me about what the difference between in compliance with exceptions and not in compliance. I don't get it.
Because there are exceptions that are false, and there are exceptions that are not false. But like, you know, like, exceptions can be like something that we should have seen, or that we, because I don't know. Yeah, I agree. Like, I don't know, there's so much more detail it needs to be. I would vote for not compliant, but...
The reason I'm looking at you is that this comes back around to your performance evaluation. So if I were using this as, you know, to, to evaluate, this is an example of where it wasn't in compliance. However, this is a plus in dealing with, you know, a situation that arose, you directed your team in a way that was truly really excellent work on behalf of the district. So that's where I, I'm, that's where I'm asking, can we hold this to be two separate?
I'm, I'm okay when we're here at the board. I, that second piece of the question though is really because I, that fundamentally changes the way we write reports moving forward. So if that's no longer on, if that's no longer on here, we need to, firstly, I take off the form, because it's, we've been using it for four years now, and we have, we just have to write the reports coming up very differently.
I'd almost be more in favor of, instead of that third category having like a sub-question under not in compliance, was like, was the non-compliance adequately addressed by the superintendent? Like, yes or no?
I like that.
Or something like that.
Some sort of note.
Yeah, something where we can put a note in about what the follow-up is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like that.
Jen's waving the notes around.
And then that note would follow it to the layer.
Yes, it stays as part of, I like, I like that.
I like that.
So removing in compliance with exceptions and creating a space for not in compliance and follow-up step by leadership, was that deemed satisfactory?
Compliance redeemed. Is that...
Compliance taken away, compliance redeemed. I feel like...
For me, it's, we're not getting, whatever the narrative is that we're writing, the competence that, the competency that's there of the system...
Yes.
That is moving forward, because that's what we want to capture, right? I mean, there's, you know, human error, does the system work? Human error, the system doesn't work. So we want to capture it worked, and there's an excellence here that we don't want to admit, right? And then we build upon it. But I do think, is that that underlying note of, is there competence here? That's what we're measuring is the competence of the system. I was going to quote earlier, Jean-Luc Picard, my Star Trek quote of the day, "It is possible to do everything right and still lose." And I think this is exactly that situation, so...
I'll save it.
Yeah, not me and Jean-Luc.
So does anyone, so do we have a formal motion? John, your comment a bit ago.
I think that, yes.
You need to say it. Okay, so there's a motion from John to deem OE 3 as not in compliance. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. All those in favor of approving OE 3 as being not in compliance signify with aye.
Can we clarify that it's not in compliance, however, with the notes?
Yep, and I will help, because we're going to talk about notes. Include some notes that can work with Lori, and we can, if that's okay to everybody, amend the report as written too, to include some of these notes?
Yeah. I think I'm ready to vote.
Okay.
I can't, there's a vote on the table, so I have to hold until we vote.
Or is there further discussion?
I can't.
All those in favor of approving OE, it seems we're to say approve, approving OE 3 as being not in compliance signify with aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Juan Carlos. Okay, so the vote has passed.
All right, so moving forward, because we have OE 3s coming up very fast, what is the third category now?
It's...
It's a free writing.
It's in compliance or not in compliance, but then we're going to add a caveat underneath if it's not, was there competency, or I have satisfactory response was a term that I heard?
If not explained.
If not explained.
For circumstances of non-compliance.
And maybe it'll just overlay with this, right? With what we have drafted, does this still look like in terms of a board summary that would go with it? So I don't think there's another choice. I mean, we're agreeing it's either in compliance or not, but there's going to be a narrative, regardless, I'd like to have a narrative of a board summary, even if it's in compliance, that we can reference and go back to that captures our discussion.
Is that illustrated? I can't remember. Two hundred years ago.
Right. But highlighting specifically if it's not in compliance, the level of satisfactory response on behalf of the district if something were to be not in compliant, that we're going to note, like in this case, gold star, not in compliance, but highly satisfactory and amazing response to the situation that occurred. I don't think there's anything as to inform, I think it's going to be, my preference is that it just be narrative, less checkboxy is sort of what I'm leaning toward, because the more checkboxy we seem to get, the more complex this gets.
We have to remind them of checking.
So that's some example out there, that's one that's very technical, like OE 6. And I don't want Chad to forget to use this as an example. So if you got OE 6, which has probably 28 sub-indicators, if any one of those is not compliant, are we trying to say that whole report's not compliant? No.
Yes.
And that's the problem.
But I think we go back to, not compliant isn't a ding. It's a, it's not, it doesn't have negative values to it, negative connotations. Here's a place, I don't know, I mean, I'm back to where Joe's at, but just...
Or we can get rid of some of those 28 indicators.
What I would suggest is that if the language of the overall report acceptance matches the language of the indicators, then logically you're forced to say yes or no when one indicator's not in compliance. If there's a different language, like, these indicators are all in compliance except for this one, is the report acceptable? Yeah. Is the report great? Yeah, those are all different words, they mean different things, but when the word's the same, then you're forced to admit a thing, like, what if that one indicator doesn't really carry as much weight as the other 27? And we say it's not compliant because that one thing, because the words match, no? I don't know.
If an indicator not being met doesn't change your overall assessment of the report, why are we using it as an indicator?
That's an interesting one.
I feel like this needs to be... That whole conversation...
I agree.
From fresh, because at this point, we will talk ourselves, we're going to be putting what's your RCT score? We'll use that.
Yeah. But I think...
I'll use mine.
But I think there's some agreement, though, that with exceptions just adds the nebulous, I don't like the with exceptions, because that adds to the nebulous all of it, because anything can be an exception.
An exception is compliance.
Yeah, it's just not compliance. Yeah. Well, okay. So we took the vote. We've moved on to OE 3. Let's add this as, can we add this as workshop topic? When is our next OE monitoring?
Two weeks.
Is it two meetings or is it next meeting? What's...
OE 2.
OE 2.
Then a meeting after.
OE 2, you can't miss a OE 2.
No, but I mean, do we have a meeting, can we workshop, can we workshop this before the next monitoring? Do we have a meeting in between?
At least.
Eighth? Maybe let's talk about that agenda tomorrow, and maybe see if we can workshop some of this to come back to it before we actually have to do another OE. Okay. All right. Where are we? Board updates. A thousand tabs. Okay, board updates. Anything that you all have to surface? Anything updating?
Yes, this Sunday, lots of things going on.
Yep, you got a list too. Go for it.
The BSU is going down, the JP Hair Design, the Black Fibers of Dade County, Back to School event, that's going on.
Here, the Field House, right?
At the Alliance Energy Center.
JP.
Oh, the JP one, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's free haircuts, free vaccines for any kid who needs to be vaccinated, any type of vaccine, measles, mumps, whatever, everything's there, back to school supplies as well. 10 to 4 at the Alliance Center.
Thank you. Then we have new staff tomorrow, so I will be there to help greet and welcome our new hires and new staff. The back to school block party then is also Sunday here at the high school Field House from 12 to 2. We heard about that earlier as well. And then convocation, of course, coming up a week from today, and then Lori, Kumian as well, as we start pre-planning for hotels for the Wasby Convention. Starting to get stuff out for folks, we can try to coordinate and find out, so already starting to look ahead, if you all don't mind, the dates for January Wasby Convention, as those spaces fill up, and when it's 20 below, it's nice to have a decent hotel space that's close to the convention hall. Okay, moving, did I miss anything?
Let me know whether or not you're going to reach something with everything.
Great, thanks, Lori. All right, moving on to superintendent's consent agenda, please take a look at the items listed there. Are there any questions? Hearing none, superintendent's consent agenda is approved as presented. Similarly, looking at the board's consent agenda, are there any questions? Hearing none, the board's consent agenda is approved, so we do technically have one more item on our agenda, and I think it can be quick since it's already been shared-ish. There's a hard copy, I believe, with each of you, but this idea of trying to have a board summary that goes with every monitoring report, super thankful for Lori, Marcy, folks that help capture the summary of board meetings, but I would like something more organic that captures the discussion that we have as board members that partners with the full monitoring reports that we have, so we have some sort of narrative to reflect back on when we do our summary evaluation of the superintendent. We use this next one. And this template doesn't have to be locked in in terms of the verbiage, but at least I think it gives us something to start to work from. My thought is just for kind of sharing the work, that whomever is the person who is reading our equity statement and whole chunk land acknowledgement would then be the note-taker for any OEs that get monitored that evening, and we'll just try to do our best to ensure that it's kind of rotating through, but that I, as facilitator of the meeting, would not be note-taker in that cycle, just because I've already found that to be kind of challenging when I'm attempting to kind of facilitate and not take notes. So any thoughts just about logistics with that?
We'll photo.
Thank you. And then making sure that we, as fellow board members, then get a chance to review in board consent agenda to make sure that the notes really reflect the general sentiments of the board, right? Because again, would be utilized for the summary purposes of coming back to evaluation, so it really isn't meant to capture any one general opinion or specific opinion, but really what was the sentiment, the conclusions that the board seemed to have about the monitoring report as a whole. Okay, well, take a peek, right? This isn't policy, so any changes that anyone wants to suggest, please do, but I would love to just give this a go when we have our next OE, that sounds like it might be in two meetings.
What should we do about the OE, the monitoring report language? Have we been paving it now?
I think we're going to look tomorrow at agendas, but I think we could workshop it at the very next meeting, if that seems, so that way it's, we try to get it nailed down before we have the next OE actually coming to the table. Seem like a reasonable piece?
Do we got to have a meeting?
Quote session, that's it.
We do have quote session. I don't remember. I can open it now. I'll look at it in the morning, too.
I'm sure you all love sitting here.
Right.
As we discuss the minutia of language, such nonsense, so I...
So this language directly, I think, impacts...
Yeah.
Yeah, not that that means you want to stay here till after, I'm talking about it, but...
Thrilling conversation about the language that directly impacted, it was fascinating for everybody.
I hope so.
So that's where I want to make sure that we're at least getting our thoughts together without taking up time.
Yeah, well, sorry, if we have leadership tomorrow and we look at the agendas, we'll kind of see how we get to lay it all out.
Maybe send an email out.
Yeah, and just see what you all think as we... Okay. All right. There's a lot. Any final thoughts?
The law of the nation.
I know. Otherwise, I would accept a motion to adjourn this meeting. Thank you, Meredith. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, good try, Juan Carlos, that delay. All those in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting signify with aye. Aye?
Aye.
Great, any opposed? Me adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, Juan Carlos.